7:05, full city council meeting for September 5th, 2023. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
The tension's killing me.
It is.
Exciting.
On mute.
Juan, you start it off. Here?
Here.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear anything. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Here.
Maldonado Valdez?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Huello?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
We do have a member join in from online, so motion to take roll, call votes for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions received, refer items, committee move the items table, place them on the table, action, together suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Take a motion to take item number one off the table and open up the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to take the item one off table for public hearing, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Who's first for voting tonight, Mr. President? Did we do the 50/50? Well, make it McGee.
I think it's gonna be Jordane anyways.
Izzy.
Yeah, I don't believe you.
So, council. It was double-checked. Council Rivera will be voting first.
You're voting first.
Ah, I thought I was gonna go the whole thing without it. Ah, got me, alright.
Ah, the pressure's on.
Alright, so with the petition, is there anyone here for the Verizon?
Yeah, Vincent, somebody's online, I think. Vincent?
Vincent?
Uh, yeah, good evening, uh, this is Ben O'Connell, representing Hoyoke Gas and Electric, Electric Distribution.
Alright, turn it over to you, can you explain the request?
Uh, I, I believe that we're the ones that, um, actually requested this petition. This is gonna be a new poll set on Jarvis Ave, probably approximately 60 to 70 before the entrance to University Park Apartments. Uh, this is so that we can relocate an overhead transformer that feeds, uh, some customers in that area uh, to make room, uh, for some reconductoring that we'll be performing next year at University Park Apartments in addition to other things such as transformer replacements and such.
Alright, are there any questions for Vincent? Counselor Jordane?
Just one technical question, was everyone within the radius and the abutters all notified? And were there any concerns or objections of any of the neighbors?
Uh, my understanding is that the, uh, abutters were, uh, notified or, uh, someone tried to get ahold of them, I was not the person that, that reached out personally. Uh, and we have not received any, uh, feedback from anybody, uh, to date.
Chuck, thank you.
Anyone further? Motion to be to close?
Close the public hearing.
All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Take a motion, we adopt the, uh, request.
Motion is to adopt the request, the clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the, uh, petition.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Huello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Items laid on the table from the mayor letter vetoing the CPA ballot question be placed on, uh, the November 2023 election?
That's all, so.
Nothing? Okay?
Nope.
Number three?
I can make two motions, Mr. President?
Sure.
A motion to, uh, suspend, both motions to suspend rules, uh, one to take up, uh, these items as a package and the other to go out of order and take up, uh, incoming items along with the same package with the intent of, uh, adopting each of these tonight. Just so everybody knows, the items I'm speaking of are items on the table, three, four, five, and six. The incoming orders are items 67, 68, 69, 75, 77, and 78. Each of these are requested transfers from different line items into the injured on duty accounts.
So motion to suspend the rules, take off the table, items three to six, which is, three is $9,952.04 from sergeant patrol to injured on duty. Four is $25,005.11, uh, 58 cents from sergeant patrol to injured on duty. Five is $2,293.90 from firefighters to injured on duty. And six is $2,293.90 from firefighters to injured on duty, so take those up, uh, off, uh, off the table, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then package them with, I have 75, 77, what were the other ones, Counselor McGivern?
75, 77, 78.
What were the first ones before that?
67.
67, 68, and 69.
So taking up 67, 68, 69, 75, 77, and 78, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let me just get the last. Alright. 67 is $27,853.36 from, uh, sergeant patrolmen to injured on duty. 68 is $2,293.90 from firefighters to injured on duty. Uh, 69, same amount for injured on duty firefighters. 75 is $22,249.22 injured on duty police. 77 is $25,944.66 to injured on duty police. And the last one, 78, is $2,293.90 for injured on duty firefighters. Motion to be receive, adopt, pass the first reading for three to six and then the ones that I just read. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. President, the reason we do this, um, is the same as we do just about every meeting. Um, we understand that public safety employees from time to time are injured on duty, sometimes temporary, sometimes long-term, and we like to take these salaries that they still get out of the line items for their salary and for accountability, put them into a line item notice injured on duty. This is tracked by both the department heads and by the, uh, by the auditor's office themselves. Um, tonight, I can tell you this represents probably the entire summer plus about eight pay periods. Um, I have no clue how many individuals are collectively here, but I didn't see any, uh, significant changes in what we've been doing in the most more recent meetings.
Any questions? Seeing none, motion is to pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for all of them.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Huello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve those. We are on to... Number seven, committee on charter and rules who's referred an order that employee-related ordinances issue be sent to public service instead of ordinance committee and that, uh, be adopted, but instead, uh, striking out instead of ordinance committee. Counselor Malavales?
Yeah, so I put in, thank you, Mr. President, um, I followed up with the language change or additional items to the language for the two rules. Um, they should have been sent out on Friday for everyone to review, um, but they're in front of us now and we just have to either uh, agree with it or not.
Any questions, comments?
Nope.
Seeing none, so the motion is, um, that we recommend it and change it, um, second. Clerk will, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for that change.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Did she say my name?
No.
Did you?
I said Bartley, I didn't hear you say anything.
Oh, we didn't hear you.
Yeah.
We didn't hear you.
Bartley? Yeah, now I heard you, ma'am clerk. No.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Huello?
No.
Ten yeas, three nays.
Your vote, approve that one. Eight, committee on charter and rules who's referred an order that all road and sign issues be sent to public safety committee instead of the ordinance committee recommended, but striking out instead of ordinance committee. Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, same to the last order, it was conversation and chartering rules and as well in the last meeting, um, the council asked for us to actually have a, what the rule language will be and it was provided and we're here voting on it tonight.
Under discussion.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I will be opposing this one because in my view, it will delay the ability of people to get their handicap placards because it'll have to go to public safety, then it'll have to go back over to ordinance, and I think it's an unnecessary delay, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I, just along the same lines, I'm not against the concept of what's being proposed through our charters and rules that to, uh, a lot of, uh, good reasons that makes sense, but it also delays our votes, the city council's votes on some very important issues and handicap parking, I think, you know, to delay that for someone for an, at a minimum, an extra two weeks just doesn't, uh, sit well, I think, with the people who need the handicap parking. So I think without the charter change and, and without some understanding that the law department is now gonna be required to go to all of our meetings, all of our committee meetings, it gets to be, I, I think it's just not a good idea to do it at this time.
Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, Mr. President, I definitely hear both speakers, um, I think, you know, in the charter and rules, there's another order around, um, changing the process around ordinance changes and making it smoother, so it does now all ordinances have to go to, um, the ordinance committee, also us as a council, every time there's an order comes in, there have been numerous times that we send orders to whatever committee we decide, so we are hearing the handicap maybe just as a standard within our body, we just decide right now that we send all handicaps to ordinance committees until that other rule is changed, but I do hear both of you and I, that's part of the process that we're working on in charter and rules, thank you.
Alright, seeing no one else, uh, motion was to recommend it and adopt, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Huello?
No.
Ten yeas, three nays.
Nine?
There's a four, four nays, right?
Nine, four.
Oops, sorry, yeah, nine, four, sorry about that.
With that, that was approved. Number nine. Committee on ordinance was referred in order at the ordinance section 12 dash four, flags of the city of Hoyoke be amended to include the new regulations for flying the POW flag, recommend it be adopted.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon?
If I may, I wanna check in with my committee if they have reviewed the corrected legal form and if they can stipulate to it now being correct. Ordnance committee members, I just wanna make sure.
When did this come in, just to confirm?
If not, we'll leave it on the table. I'm not hearing any yeses.
Kind of a longer ordinance, maybe we table this one.
Table?
Leave it on the table.
Alright, motion is to table nine to give more time for review. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ten, uh, committee on ordinance was referred in order to amend section two dash one five six point one to return the approval assistance solicitor to city council by the president of the city, uh, council with the following language, recommend it be adopted, uh, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President, I think this one came to us on Friday, it was relatively brief, so I would, um, make a motion to take it off the table and adopt the revised ordinance.
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion? Just adopt it, oh, Counselordane?
Just to refresh people's memory, this is about the city council president having input about the assigned, uh, city solicitor, that language, the law department, uh, got that in there, so I think everybody was on board with it, so I think we should adopt it.
Alright, yeah, it was just a, a fix of a...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was adding that was taken out before by accident, so that's...
Correct.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, it was, I, I think what happened was I, I asked at the last meeting that we put a, kind of a date certain by which this person would be slide into the position, and that was the language that was inserted and that seems to be in there now by the first meeting in February, so...
Yep.
That, that was, that was the one changed, Mr. President.
So motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And most, motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the, the fix.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Huello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Eleven, uh, committee on public safety who's referred an order that, uh, order at the DPW parking rec, looking to make a Roman park a kid and dog park, as it stands, only half the park is being utilized, recommend it, it's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
Uh, so yeah, that's, I didn't believe this was an order filed by Counselor Juan Anderson Burgos. Um, we, we, we discussed it and, um, I think it came out that the other side of the park, um, sorry, that was my daughter, uh, the other side of the park was, is actually being utilized by, uh, little league baseball and I think, uh, softball to be able to like to do, uh, mighty mighty and like, uh, toddler age, um, educational programming. Um, but if, if we could allow, uh, Juan to be able to speak a little more on it, that, I'm totally willing to do that too as well.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I totally agree, um, it wasn't feasible, so I recommend what was talked about.
Alright, so...
Complied with.
This is, that's been complied with, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Uh, how about we take up thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen as a package? Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirteen, committee on public safety was referred in order that the DPW superintendent, uh, provide the city council an updated tree list, uh, complied with. Fourteen, public safety was referred, um, in order with community support or that the city forester present his obligation action plan addressing constituents' concerns, ongoing issues including dangerous dead and overgrown trees, that's complied with. And fifteen, that the police chief provide the city council with a performance report on shot spotter, and that's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So, for all the tree orders, um, I believe Yoni and, um, Yoni had came in the first time with, um, uh, with the whoever their contract, I don't know at hand, but whoever, whomever we are contracting with to help do the study uh, around the trees, uh, that need help throughout the city, uh, they determine which ones are healthy, which ones weren't, um, and then at the same time, the following meeting, we ended up bringing in, uh, the John, uh, John Tuit, our, our superintendent of parks and pretty much, uh, the person in charge of our trees, pretty much our tree guy. And, um, he came in and, and outlined with Yoni, um, the, the project of what they're doing on Main Street with cutting the trees. They began already the process of El Las de las Familias, uh, I mean, around the area, I mean, where El Las de las Familias is located. They began there, they are now working, to my understanding, on, on, uh, I think bidding or getting the contract, uh, for the rest of Main Street and then, uh, going throughout the rest of the city to, uh, work on the trees that they, um, that they identified that needed to be cut back or cut down. The ones that need to be cut down, they will be replacing with, uh, smaller trees and, um, trees that actually make sense in the, in the, in the spots uh, where they'll be located, uh, but for the most part, um, it seems like things are moving, maybe not as fast as we would like them to be. They're moving, um, and the moment that, according to John Tuit, the moment that we end up getting, uh, another person to, to help them man, uh, the, the new truck with the tree loader being a midget, um, that they will be on it, um, double time pretty much, cause they'll have the contractor and they'll be able to have, uh, uh, some in-house work to be done as well. Um, that's with regards to all the trees. Now with the shot spotter, um, I believe they came in, um, cause they came in a couple times, um, and the, um, the last time when they came in, they presented a map that kind of identified a variety of, um, spots where, where, um, they were detected to be sounds, but they weren't, they didn't know for sure. But then there were other areas where they did, um, pretty much identify shootings because of being able to go over there and, well, not, I don't know, for the most part, they say they identify shootings cause they go over and they'll find shells or, or someone called and reported, um, but I think what came out for us is that the information that is being provided is helpful to the, to the extent to help us better understand where things are happening, right? Uh, apparently, a lot of things are happening more, um, uptown wise versus the actual downtown area, according to the map. Um, I'll reach out to the chief and see if he can share the map that he shared with, uh, that public safety with all the other councils so everyone can have a, a quick view as to, um, what it was that he presented that day. Um, but ultimately, there were some questions asked around, uh, areas that I picked up that were not necessarily in the shot spotter zone, um, some areas in Ward Seven, some areas that were, um, in the South Hadley area, um, and areas that were higher up in the five and six area. Um, and according to what the police have stated is that, um, shot spotter still picks up some of that, uh, um, that information, the sounds, hey, some of the sounds, but the situation is, is that because it's so far out, there's no guarantee that the shots, could be shots or it could be something different, but it at least allows for, uh, I guess, an understanding that there could be something out there making the sounds that sound similar to a shot. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much what I got from, or I got the report out from that day.
Alright, so thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, unless there's anyone else, are complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve and sixteen, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, twelve, public safety order that the public safety committee meet with representatives from the opioid substance abuse task force. The goal will be to improve, uh, long-term success for, uh, residents' capacity, uh, so this was lead to a draw. Sixteen is public health director appear before public safety committee to provide an update, uh, homeless, a homeless shelter or memorial, and that's lead to a draw as well. Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, these were both lead to a draw because these are older, um, orders and, um, I think, uh, some of these, um, issues were addressed throughout the process over the last two years, if not, then, um, we were discussing to possibly refile the orders in a different way to bring people back in, um, because, um, some of the councils that had filed these orders that stepped away and throughout that they stepped away, they're just not here. Um, and it doesn't, I, I, we didn't know how best to approach it, so if other councils are gonna take it upon themselves to refile some of these orders in a way that we can, I guess, take, take them up.
Okay, so these are lead to a draw? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we are... Off to public comment. We have two signed up here, first is Iris, Iris of 128 Lyman Street. As a reminder, it's a minute and a half, around a minute time, I'll just give you a wave, um, and then we're towards the end. Um, so there's two signed up today and we'll see who is online, full name and address for the record and then we'll turn it over to you. Up, just, there's a switch underneath or on top, depends on where they put it. There you go.
My name is Iris Espada, I am a resident at 128 Lyman Street in Lyman Terrance. I am also the president of Lyman Terrance Association and I am one of the board members of Neighbors to Neighbors. Today here, I just wanted to acknowledge and thanks Mayor Garcia, the counselors Jenny Rivera, Jose, Juan Burgos, and, um, Israel Rivera. We are, I just also wanna thank, um, Anthony Soto and two other members of the school department for taking their time to come to Lyman Terrance and speak to the parents there because we have an issue with the bus, the transportation of our kids there, that it was taken away. And, um, we have issues that we wanted to share with them and they were able to come to us and speak with us. I just wanna say thank you and, uh, we're looking forward to hear the resolution of this issue with the counselors, the help of the counselors and the mayor. And I just wanna let you guys know that my kids do need the bus. There's a lot of issues that need to be taken in consideration before that transportation was taken away from them. So I'm here representing my community and asking you guys to please take a good detail of this, um, this decision that you guys are making.
No, you can keep going, I was just letting you know. You can keep going, alright. Alright, thank you, thank you. Next is Gloria?
Hi, good evening, everyone, I'm Dr. Gloria Caballero, 5 Whiting Avenue here in Hoyoke. I also want to support, um, Iris, um, in terms of the need of the, of our, from our neighbors in Lyman Terrace about the school bus, it has to do with the safety of our students and their families and it also has to do with the quality of life uh, in our community. I commend the, the work that you all have done and I'm sure that you would support that order that has to do with, you know, at the end of the day, we all want quality of life for our neighbors here in Hoyoke. Thank you so much for what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
She has a book up there called...
Alright, so next, anyone online? Spencer Fox Peterson, online?
Hey there, can you hear me?
Is that him? Yes.
Good evening, everybody, um, my name's Spencer Peterson, I'm calling in from 51 Portland Street, Hoyoke. Uh, just calling, uh, more to speak to the community, I wanted to remind everybody... I wanted to remind everybody that Cap is, is a, um, director of internal affairs or, you know, the person in charge of internal affairs that turned down many complaints over the years, is, uh, accused in court of a subordinate of inappropriate activity. This is a real, really disappointing, uh, thing to have this person still working while having a restraining order. We need to do something about that. The community needs to know about somebody in a position of power. Uh, this is really disturbing, and we need action or we need some, some sort of clarity as members of the community for our safety. And I would much rather that man's salary, if it turns out to be true, what he's accused of, be given so the kids can get to school and so that we don't have six million gallons of sewage dump into the Connecticut River when we have a heavy rain like we did a couple weeks ago. So I just want everybody in the community to know, connect these dots, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Have a good one, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? JR?
Yeah, hello, thanks. Can you read?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, my name is, uh, John JR Rivera, uh, lives over on one twenty-five Cavan Street Department, I'm board Hoyo, and I'm here speaking on both, uh, issues. Right now, as it stands, uh, captain or paid on leave captain has, uh, allegedly run these crimes, um, and he has gone through the court system, but he is still on paid leave. He's still making a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We have two criminals in our, uh, or two alleged criminals, um, in our, uh, in our city office that are basically leeching off of taxpayer money. Yet somehow, by God's logic, kids cannot go on buses to schools. We're defunding all the wrong parts of our city, uh, office. We need to really take a good look at all these things. We're funding toys like ShotSpotter, which have been proven not to work, um, and, and we're cutting budgets, uh, such as not allowing the most disenfranchised, uh, children of our city in wards one, right, uh, to, to be able to use, uh, something that is a, something that is a human right. Transportation is a human right. A lot of these kids have disabilities because they are disenfranchised. They have migraines, right? They have chronic pain issues. So what is to be done in the winter and in the summer when they need that transportation? There, it just can't be enough that, that an adult, um, is there in these walking buses. More needs to be done for our children of Hoyo. Please do the right thing. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, what is it? MV?
Sorry, Mr. President. Uh, I'm Asharo Victor. I sign out for soon. Because I would like to, um, echo, um, this lady here.
Hold on, hold on, just need a full name and address.
Okay, sorry. Victor Machado, forty South Falls Street, um, also running for city council of Ward One. I would like to echo this lady here who, um, we were met, um, Lyman Terrance, and we were there technically, um, speaking about what is happening in the community as well. And we were waiting for, um, community representative, um, to show up, but nobody showed up in that meeting, unfortunately. And so, I'm so glad that we are here discussing, um, this matter with the school bus and a move forward because, um, we are makers of law and maker of history, and the history that we are doing here is the side effects of those kids we have. So that is important, um, as a city officials, not to be, um, it's better to be proactive in citizen situations and not proactive when the things happens. And so, we need to see or think about how we are serving our community. This is a rear intention, a rear commitment, or just to have a position in the city hall. So we are serving people. We are serving people we need. We are serving people that are losing all the time home, but we are here. I'm glad for that, and just thinking...
We are at our time.
And the kids, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alright, so that is public comment, both here and online. Off to communication seventeen from the mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to take up the bus issue. Can we go to that? Can we, uh, move forward with that issue, please?
Okay. Uh... Eighty-six?
I believe it's eighty, eighty-six.
Late file, um...
There's also, yeah.
From the mayor.
Late file B from the mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, eighty-six and late file B.
Alright, so motion to suspend the rules to go out of order to eighty-six and late file B as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighty-six from Counselor Rivera and Anderson Burgos. We're at the city council, work with the mayor and school superintendent to address the reinstatement of bus services for Lyman Terrace as soon as possible. Um, and then B is a communication from the mayor as a late file, and it goes on to talk about the busing service for Lyman Terrace. So, take eighty-six and B and send it to joint committee? I, I miss that, Counselor.
Joint school and city council.
Joint committee. Okay. Uh, Counselor here.
I was actually gonna recommend public safety because that was the issue that a lot of the tenants were bringing up mostly, but if that's what y'all wanna do.
I'm... Hold on, so Counselor Bradley, I saw your hand first. Nope? Okay, sorry. Counselor Malal Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm down for to send it to both committees. I know public safety is meeting next week. I'm not sure how soon you can get in the agenda, um, but it is something that is, you know, we met with the residents today, and it's something that should be dealt with sooner rather than later.
So do you want it...
Send it to both. Your meeting's happening first, and then we're, like, I believe it's, we've considered September twenty-eighth.
So do you want to have it sent to public safety, copy to the joint committee?
Correct.
And whatever happens in public safety can be referred?
Back to joint.
Yeah, I guess.
Perfect.
Hold on. Counselor Jane?
Two items. One, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, please, of this item. Strly in favor. Number, number two, uh, just briefly under discussion, and I appreciate we're gonna have the meeting next week. I did want to clear up a couple points, though, that bear repeating before the meeting. One is, I just want everybody to understand, the city council did not develop the bus plan, okay? So let's start with there, just so we need to educate the public, our, our wonderful residents down at Lyman Terrace. You know, basically, the ci, I'm glad we have a, it's a, well, I'm gonna use a bus analogy here. The city council went right under the bus because what happened was, they took the bus away and then said, "Oh, you don't like it that you lost your bus? Call your city counselors and ask them for more money," almost implying, like, "We took your bus." I just want everybody down at Lyman Terrace to understand, city council did not take the bus away from the kids. And when they'll also say something like, to the effect of, "Oh, well, this is all money that we're getting from the city council, and it isn't part of the school department budget." They came up with that plan, not the thirteen people in this room, just so everybody understands that. Point number two is, if we are gonna be responsible for the bus plan, which, that's fine, okay? We need to have say over it here in this chamber with your input, with the residents, because we believe this is a collaborative process where we bring in the residents that are supposed to be affected, and they come in and you have input about how this affects you and your children. Because to have no input, no say, you just hear about it third-hand and say, "Oop, your kid's without a bus," that, and school has now already started, so this is daily affecting people. Um, that's not the way we should be doing business in the city of Hoyo. And number two is, we need to immediately fix this bus. Get this bus tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned. Get the bus down there for the Lyman Terrace kids, and then we can talk about item B, which is the mayor's letter, which is this holistic review of the entire policy and all the zones from West Hoyo to Ward Two to here, there, and everywhere. That's great, we can have that big conversation about what it all costs, but tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned, put the bus back at Lyman Terrace. Let these, you know, and the other thing that concerns me is the fact that, basically, this was done without appropriate feedback, and we've got to get better as to how we're communicating things to parents. I know myself, I have children in the public schools. How this message got out, I, you know, I'm being told, "Oh, well, they were told months ago." I don't believe that to be true, based on what I'm hearing, that this was all found about recently. And, um, I'm concerned that every day that goes by, these kids do not have a bus. And whether we have the meeting next week, the city council's not poised to have another meeting for a month, right? We're probably not gonna have another full city council until the first Tuesday in October. So I want to make sure we're meeting the expectations of these residents that you could be waiting another month. If they're waiting for us to approve something, this could be another month that you don't have a bus for your kids. And that's just not right. This bus should be put back tomorrow, and we can figure this all out. School department can come in, we can have a couple meetings, and we can get input, and maybe there's other people in other areas of the city that we need to invite to this besides just Lyman Terrace. Um, if this city council's gonna be involved, we're gonna do it the right way, and we're gonna get citizen input. I want to see a map that has all the affected zones throughout the city because how do, how do, you know, we need to have good notice to the residents about what is actually happening, and maybe some people feel, "Hey, it's no problem, I have a car, I can get there." But for poorer residents, they may not have access to a car, or they have to get to a job, and they can't get their kid into the, in, over to the school. So not everything is cookie cutter, it isn't one-size-fits-all, and we can't... What concerns me about where I see this going, it's almost like you have to change everything in order to get the Lyman Terrace kids back their bus. So I just want to lay that all out. I make these points because this is very time-sensitive, and I don't think they can wait a whole nother month for the bus for the kids. So I wanted to get that out, and hopefully intermediary steps can be taken now, tomorrow, and we can figure out the bigger answer on the whole city. But let's take care of Lyman Terrace tomorrow, please. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to be clear, and I also want to mention that the parents all received a letter on this decision in January. So what was mentioned earlier was that this came out of the blue and that there was no transparency, but there was. Now, it still means a lot that these students do face safety issues. And beyond that, the landscape down there, born and raised in this city, and I hung out around this area a lot, yes, there are concerns. To this day, as a matter of fact, like I mentioned, the landscape has changed drastically from what we see day-to-day and what these kids are seeing day-to-day. So do they need this bus? Absolutely. But to say that they never received anything, that it was out of the blue, that is false. Like a counselor that's still in this room, mentioned not too long ago, must be campaign season. So let's talk about the meeting that I went to with Counselor Rivera, Counselor Rivera, myself, Counselor Maldonado Velez, and, um, Mildred Lefeb from, Lefeb, from the school committee. We all met, we had an in-depth conversation with the constituents who are concerned about their children. We sat there over an hour, and I heard this woman basically crying. So is the need dire? Absolutely! It is one-hundred percent dire. To say it's like a light switch, "Let's just do it tomorrow," that's another false, you're sending a false, uh, pretense. It's not even, if it's, if it, it's as if it's doable, and it's so much more complicated than that. So to sit here and say that, that it can happen just like that is false. Secondly, people who exploited the people that were here during the finance committee meeting, I will not mention names, but to come up and say, "Yeah, I'm running for this seat in council," when our counselor, who's been working extremely hard, thank you, Jenny Rivera, working extremely hard to work with her constituents, this is all bogus, and it's done on purpose. So yeah, it's campaign season, I guess, no matter even if you're exploiting people's feelings about their concerns about their children. That's just horrible, horrible, to say the least. And we all know which members of this body are pushing that, and it needs to stop because you're separating a community and you're separating the people of this community. And these politic games need to stop. Secondly, you want to talk about, "Oh, oh, it's, it's, they pushed it on us, it's not our fault," da-da-da, but it is, because we sit here and we make cuts to the budget that impact and force the superintendent to say, "Okay, where are we gonna cut? Where are we gonna cut? Where are we gonna cut?" And then this happens. That's horrible. This is a game, and guess what? People's lives are at stake, children's lives are at stake. So if you're gonna sit here and exploit these people, come to the meetings that are important, like the one that happened today at one o'clock.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, okay, here we go. So, uh, first of all, show me the vote that we took. If you're, what you just said is accurate, I want you to back it up. Show me the vote that this council took to, to cut bus funding for the Hoyo Public Schools. You know that vote never took place, but yet you make that statement in this room. You know that we do not vote on the line item.
Oh, are we doing this?
Stop, stop, stop.
Okay.
Counselor Jenny. Counselor Jordan has the floor. I, look at, look at, let us...
But people cannot make accusations and not have facts to back them up.
You do it all the time. You do it all the time. How do you like it now?
Counselors...
How do you like it now?
As long as it's true, I don't mind.
I sat here and bit my tongue, I'm not gonna tolerate that.
You never bite your tongue, that's the problem.
Yeah, never mind your tongue, you do the same thing. You're such a hypocrite.
Counselors...
Order.
Look at, look at, stop. We have a long agenda. We know the rules, which is, if a counselor is speaking, the counselor speaks. Look at, look at, stop. Counselor Jordan has the floor. Counselor Jordan.
So, everybody knows, everybody knows, that this city council does not have line item authority over the school department budget. We have no vote that ever took place regarding the school transportation budget. Uh, that's just simply an untruthful statement. Um, this city council approves the macro, multi-tens-of-millions-of-dollar line item for the overall school budget. I want citizens to understand that. Um, I wish we had more authority over the school department budget, quite frankly. One of the concerns I've expressed in the past is that, you know, we have a school receivership, and we've lost local control, and if, even our own school committee, who used to have that authority, that was taken away from them. And today, no one has that. We can only approve the macro number. So the point I was making is, if it's gonna be the city council taking the blame, then I want us to have that input with our citizens, to come in and approve this. And yes, if they wanted this bus back tomorrow, they could put that bus back tomorrow. Absolutely, one-hundred percent, they could do that. As far as today's meeting, let the record reflect, I received from Counselor Jenny Rivera today, a very nice phone call at ten o'clock this morning to come on three hours' notice to a meeting at one o'clock at Lyman Terrace. Unfortunately, I work, and I'm unable to come on three hours' notice to a meeting. Um, that was when I was invited. Jenny, I think you can back me up on that, I hope. Um, and that, that took place. So regrettably, I was not able to leave work to come to a meeting at one o'clock in the afternoon, otherwise I would have loved to come. Um, anybody's welcome to call me anytime, we can have a cup of coffee. Um, but anyways, that, let that, let the record reflect that as well. And as far as the politics of all of this, I, I won't even address that. These are substantive issues involving parents that want a bus for their kid. I think I've made my... I think I've made my statement crystal clear on that. The bus should be restored, and we should work together to talk about and address the bigger plan. Hopefully, we can do that. But in the meantime, I think it, I just want to make sure everybody understands that this council will not meet again for another month. And to have this lingering out there with no bus, because someone's waiting for an appropriation for us for another month, I don't think is the appropriate way. The people in charge need to divert the assets around to be able to fund the bus and, and get that done as soon as possible. So thank you very much.
Counselor Rivera, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, sure. Thank you all for your, uh, how do you say? Passionate debate. And at the same time, I want to thank the residents that were here. They probably walked out already. Oh, some of you are still here. For actually standing up and organizing for something that you believe that you should have. That is, that is the part of democracy, and that is the beauty of it. I'm sorry I wasn't here the day of the finance committee I came after. I would have liked to be able to talk to you guys one-on-one, to be able to give you my perspective with regards to some of this. I wholeheartedly agree with giving the bu, the bus back immediately. To me, I'm on the same wave with regards to this was always in the budget, budget. And it feels like it all of a sudden got... I'm not going to say re-approached it or cut out, but things changed, right? But ultimately, like, there is a lot of historical context that belongs with this conversation that a lot of bits and pieces need to get put together for it to be better understood. It is a simple conversation. The kids need a ride. That is a simple conversation. But ultimately, at Lawrence School, there's a lot of kids that need a ride, too. And I took, I think at Dunhill School, there are a lot of kids that need a ride, as well as Sullivan and a variety of other ones. And it's not the, the part that I don't like, it, it's making me feel like we're putting taxpayers against our communities that need it the most, right? And, and that's not what I want to do. That is not what we should do as a community, right? We shouldn't say it's either or. I feel like Lyman Terrace kind of should have this bus. But the reality of what it is, this is a result of us going back to community schools back, way back when, I think right after I graduated high school. When I went to school, I went to McMahon School, and I lived in the flats. That was at a time where we can go to whatever school we wanted to. And I think that whomever was on the school committee then, and the schools in general, were finding ways to cut back on busing and transportation overall, right? And that's exactly what they did. They rezoned schools, they eliminated busing. And if you were close to where you lived, I mean, you would go to the school close to where you lived. What ended up happening for Lyman Terrace is that the bridge going down Lyman was shut down. And because that bridge was shut down through that process, they were able to continue to have their bus throughout this 20-year process. Now, the, the bridge is good. And because the bridge is good, the safety measures are improved, and it makes it okay for them to not have a bus. So this is just a result of something that happened 20 years ago, 20 to 25 years ago, I would say, happening again now. And their result, they're feeling the, the brunt of what everyone else felt a long time ago. Unfortunately, this is not a, to me, I, I, I feel like we should be busing. It's sad to see kids walking from Maple Street down to Morgan, and they're probably in second grade, first grade, mid-winter. And then at the same time, if they don't send them to school, they're going to get a letter saying that you're going to get DCF called on you, because your kids didn't go to school on time. But anyways, I think that us coming together, having a, a conversation with the school committee to make sure that we could try to provide the best opportunity that is, I guess, I, I can't say cost-effective, because eventually it's going to cost somebody something. Because there are other people that need rides, too. But at the end of the day, if we're going to provide for them, I think we should provide it now and work through the processes of trying to figure out how we can provide for the others that need it, too. I don't want to take up anybody else's more time, because we've already wasted a lot of time on this one issue.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
So I just want to say that, yeah, I have been very involved with this. There was reasons why I couldn't attend the meeting last Monday. And one, I will not attend the meeting and not go and look at the residents and not have anything to say. So when I got called, I called immediately the school committee members. From there, I involved Chief Pratt, I involved Anthony Soto, I involved the mayor, our city solicitor, Lisa Ball. So I was contacting everyone, but there's a lot of obstacles to go through. So this change also came with the school changing, zoning change that they're having. So it's, it's not an easy fix. It really is not. Do I agree the kids should be walking? Absolutely not. But for anybody to say that I'm not involved, I will not, I will not tolerate that. I am not going to give any of the residents there false information. We're right now, like Juan said, there was a parent that was crying. Do I, I agree with her, and I told her she should come here and speak up. But I'm not going to tell them, go run to the city hall and go to a finance committee and bring it up there, because that's not where you bring it up. So the mayor, we had a good conversation today. But there's a lot of things that's lacking. There, there's not enough staff members at the bus company. So they would have to hire, go through the processing of hiring somebody for the bus company. Not only that, it's going to come with a query check. So there's a lot. So do we want it? Yes, and we want it ASAP. But there's, sometimes our hands are tied to this. So it's not as easy as everybody thinks, is go there and it's going to happen overnight. But have I been involved? Very involved, very involved. For, for anybody to even sit there and say that I was not involved. And I don't do it for power, and I don't do it to get votes. If I get voted in again, fine. If I don't, fine, too. But I'm here for my residents. I've lived in Hoyok all my life. My kids were all at Hoyok Public Schools. My kids walked to school, but they never had to walk from Lyman to Kelly School. From Peck, they had a bus. So to, to say that is like, whatever. But anyhow, we are working on it. We're trying to find a solution, and like Kevin says, as soon as we can. And then I did call Kevin this morning, and he did tell me he couldn't make it. It was a three-hour notice. But we didn't have confirmation with Lyman Terrace if they were going to give them the community room or not, which they didn't, and we ended up meeting outside. So it wasn't done on purpose for Kevin as well. He, he did apologize, and he said he couldn't make it, because we all work. I work, too. I took my lunch, and it went over an hour. But to say that we are working on it, yes. And should we all work together? Yes. That's all I need to say.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'll be quick. Yeah, I was, I was notified, notified half hour before the meeting. I dropped everything, because I knew it was important. I dropped everything and went straight there. I just want to apologize, because I've been on this council going on six years, and I don't act this way. I really don't. But if you were at that meeting and you saw the tears and the frustrations, you can understand where I was coming from. But it doesn't make it right, because this is not how, so I apologize. I wasn't trying to be intentional. I was working on my emotions of what I saw today. You know, and I thought about my granddaughter. Just, these are innocent little children, and, and who we have to protect at all costs. So I think this body can move forward, have these, go to committee, and have meaningful conversations and move the needle in the right way. Thank you.
Counselor McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify two things. One, last week, this was not before the finance committee, nor was it on the agenda, nor could the finance committee actually discuss it while in session, because we would have been violating the open meeting law. The finance committee did delay the start of the meeting, and we had an impromptu good discussion with the, very emotional discussion with a lot of the residents that were here. And I think we all understand the issue that's at bay, and it needs to be, uh, needs to be brought to the right people as quickly as possible. I also just wanted to clarify, the, the school bus contract, the school busing criteria is established by the school administration and belongs with them and the school committee. And I know in receivership, that doesn't make it as good as when we are not in receivership, but the school committee is active. We are part of the funding, and yes, we do have to be part of the discussion, because it has an impact on the city side of the budget. But at the same time, it's very complicated, the contract itself. The issues are very complex across the board. It's not just about parents and students. It's about homeless shelters, with homeless family shelters, busing people from, busing kids back and forth from other cities, because the shelter they found, even though they were from Hoyok and the public schools, is in Springfield. It gets very expensive, it gets very complicated, and there's a lot to it. And the school department has, has, I think, a team of two or three people that work on this year round. And we all know, we are very lucky that the school department was on top of it to save us some money with the contract by allowing, with our permission, going out to the past two contracts, extending them out to five years. But last week, the finance committee could not take it up. We look forward to, if the mayor decides to put any appropriation in front of us, to having a more healthy discussion, but we could not violate the open meeting law.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I want, I want to thank the people who worked at the meeting. The women to the meeting today, all, all of my, my colleagues, to, very important issue, and the, the passionate responses Juan and Kevin. You know, there's only so much we can do. I was here at that finance meeting, and we must have had 30 kids and about eight parents, you know, explaining what, you know, how it affected them. And it's not easy to see that. You know, we want people to get to school. We want them to be safe. But there's other side is, is the money issue, too. It's a contract. So I, I'm looking forward to discussion. I'm looking to, forward to going to the public safety committee with the school bill, school committee with the, with the city council and, and trying to get this resolved. But it's, it's not an easy issue. I mean, we, we move schools around, we move students around. We got new districts, we got new mappings. And as Counselor Jordan said, if we're going to have a part of this, we're going to have to see that. And how do we make this better for everybody? And if we do affect, as the letter the mayor stated, if we do affect one area of the city, there's about four other areas of the city that has the same ripple effect that's going to cost a substantial amount of money. So it's something that we have to look at in the future about that. But everybody wants safety for our children. Everybody wants the kids to get to school safe. And I think we can work at that and have the best results. Thank you.
So 86 and B, late file B, to public safety, copy to the joint committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so go back. Communications. 17 is from the mayor. Progress report.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor? All opposed. 18 from the mayor in the school building committee. Progress on the middle school.
Receive a copy to finance.
Motion to receive, send to finance. Copy. All those in favor?
Aye.
19 is from the mayor. Congressional earmarks for CSO resolution. Motion be to receive. Copy to finance.
Is it possible, I suppose people want to read it first, but this is, in fairness to the mayor, he sort of took up the mantle, which we really appreciate him doing, that we thought it would be powerful if we did something joint with him and us to support us making a request to the federal government to support the funding for the $21 million that we need for CSO. And I think we might be voting on that bond later, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, there was a suggestion by myself and other members of the finance committee, and the mayor jumped right on it, to support us getting these funds, and that this would go to our congressional delegation. Unless there's any objection, this would be a nice thing if we could pass this with us and the mayor tonight.
I can read it to you.
I agree. It's, it is short.
A resolution, whereas the mayor and the city council has resolved to request that the United States Congress earmarks money to provide the city of Hoyok with financial assistance to pay for the costs incurred due to the consent decree imposed upon it by the environmental or the EPA for the reasons cited in the attached letter signed by the mayor and the Hoyok City Council. Hereby resolve at the city council of its city of Hoyok, and then it would be signed off on us, if we did today, and then record the yeas, nays, and absents.
President, I withdraw my motion to refer to finance and second the motion to adopt this evening.
Motion is...
Roll call.
Discussion. Motion is to adopt the resolution that I read, and I do believe everyone has a copy.
We do. Yep.
So any further comments?
Just, just real quick, I agree with Counselor Jordan and commend Mayor Garcia for taking the steps. I hope we can white out the, the CSO funding and sewer project fundings and do a second resolution and put in a middle school project itself. We've asked Congress, we've asked our congressional representatives before for help. We received some help over the years, but not to the extent of what's being asked. And this is not unprecedented. The resolution certainly isn't. But funding for, for, for these types of projects go back to the 60s when wastewater treatment plants were built. Goes back when the city of Worcester had their entire system changed with, with federal and state dollars. And, and I think it's, it's time that the federal government wakes up. And I understand there's, there's a lot going on in this world, and there's a lot that we need to be involved with. But we got to get back to the basics of, you know, hometown USA. And it's got to get back to us, you know, be, making sure that we have the quality life and the funding to provide the quality life to people who live in, in communities like Hoyok, in all communities itself. So certainly, I would support the resolution if everybody's comfortable with voting on it. And hopefully, Congress will wake up sometime between now and their election year, next year.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I agree. And I thank Counselor Jordan for bringing this forward to the mayor last week. And then it didn't take long for me to get this back to us. And this being our only meeting in September, I think it's important that we get this passed tonight. I think a lot of times, we run into the congressman who's in town. And not often do we see a senator, but they, they come into town every now and then. But the mayor did express to contact our senators also. But to get this signed, roll call, both tonight and passed, and get it to Congressman Neal, I think is very important.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, very briefly, I did have an opportunity to speak to Congressman Neal. And I want to, again, commend the mayor and the mayor's office and the DPW. They got the whole package to him about our need, in particular, this most recent need that we have of the $21 million. As you know, under the EPA consent decree, we have these legal obligations. One that we're going to be voting on surely, that's coming out of finance. And then in two years, we'll have the second installment of $10.5 million, combined $21 million. The, the third installment is quite some distance off in the future. If we could get these, I would be thrilled. And as I mentioned in the finance committee, it is difficult to watch when we see foreign aid given to rebuild infrastructure projects in other nations without our own American cities being able to access these type of dollars. And, and while those things are often noble themselves, we do also need to consider, you know, Washington needs to help us, particularly with laws that they pass, good laws that we all support and of noble goals. But they also need to help us with these resources. And I know Congressman Neal gets that, and I appreciate his support. And especially with him being the ranking member on the House Ways and Means Committee, I think that carries a lot of extra clout and gravitas. So would appreciate his support. And I know our two U.S. senators have also been involved in reaching out to, to support us. So hopefully, this unified message between the mayor and us will go a long way to, in showing them how much we really do need these monies. Thank you.
All right, so motion is to approve the resolution. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, we'll put your name down as the yeas and nays.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Raffi Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puel?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote to approve the resolution.
Let's make a motion to suspend the rules to take 20, 21, and 22 as a package and refers copies to the committee on finance.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules, take up as package 20, 21, 22. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. 20 is the sewer fund, 21 is the general fund, 22 is the retirement board investment report, all to finance.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I, I hope we had a chance to look at the PARAC investment report. I think you'll find that Hoyok comparable cities fares very well in terms of return and in terms of being fully vested as well. I, I know there is some, some critique in the last couple of years. I know there is some critique in the last couple of years. All the retirement board and everybody's fair game in public light, but when they perform well, I think it should be duly noted, and I'm happy to bring it to everybody's attention tonight. Thank you.
Alright, so all these to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-three, Officer General Letter Regarding Open Meeting Law Complaint.
Motion to receive.
Motion is receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-four, Law Department License Agreement for...
D G R.
To three, three seventy to three ninety-six, Main Street, to D G N R. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-five is from the city clerk and from the city council admin for the council...
Motion to receive and adopt.
A second.
Any changes, any, so motions, receive, adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? From myself, from the mayor, the C S O resolution.
That's a duplicate.
That's already done, that's done.
Motion, okay. Motion to receive.
Twenty-seven is mass D O T replacement of bridges over the first level and second level canals. Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, send to Public Safety.
Public Safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President, if I can make a motion to suspend the rules to take twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five as a package and receive.
Second.
And to say thank you to the caretakers of the grants for these completion forms, something that I know Counselor Bartley spearheaded years ago, and it's very informative. And of course, with the minutes from the various commissions, always good to have them, copies of them to read.
Motion to suspend rules, take up twenty-eight to thirty-five as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-eight is firefight equipment fiscal year, twenty-three grant completion, twenty-nine is the L W C F anniversary Hill Park grant completion, thirty is the Gateway Cities Hundred Thousand and Twenty Thousand Grant Completion, thirty-one is the Municipal Energy Tech Assistance Fifteen Thousand Grant Completion, thirty-two is D C R Urban Acuity Forestry Award, Public Treaty Inventory Thirty Thousand, thirty-three is the Health Through Urban Forestry Thirteen Thousand Five Hundred, thirty-four is the Fire Commission Minutes, and thirty-five is Redevelopment Authority. Motion is take all those and receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions, thirty-six, petition for a transportation of cannabis at one Cabot Street.
Ordinance.
To ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven is a new special permit for driveway in the front yard at one seventy-six Lincoln.
D G R.
D G N R, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? President's Report, September nineteenth is the big E. It's the big day. Counselor Bartley, you wanna share any information?
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. We shared the day with Rhode Island. It's, I know we've got several counselors going, and if anybody else wants to go, you need to tell Jeff by end of this week, and I'll get the passes and we'll have a good time. There you go.
Alright, so also is, if we're doing that, I do believe the nineteenth is our meeting? So, okay, so we did do that.
We did, we suspended already.
Okay, yep. So with that, I do believe there would be an order for overtime coming up for the police. Not sure if I saw it on here, yeah, there is. And the mayor reached out saying that we might have to do a special meeting because we're missing the nineteenth in order to address that, in order to be able to have the funds necessary to do payroll. So just giving a heads up on that. And that's it, any, anything else? Counselor McGivern?
I could, real quick, Mr. President, on October thirteenth, the Friends of the Hoyoc Mary Ground will be hosting a celebration of thirty years the Mary Ground's been open in downtown Hoyoc. This will take place at the Pope John Paul Center and Mata, former, I'm sorry, attached to the Mata Del Rosas School at the moment. Tickets are available both online and through members of the Friends and of course at the Mary Ground. This will be a nineties theme, so I think some of us don't remember the nineties, but a lot of people in this room, you know, know how to dress for the nineties and any, any, the whole thing would go to benefit the Mary Ground itself and keeping it in downtown Hoyoc. But should be a nice event and hope everybody can make it.
Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, I'm trying to keep it as neutral as possible, but I do want to put into record elections are this year, so I just wanted to read, you know, the last H to register for the preliminary for Ward Seven is September sixteenth. The preliminary election for Ward Seven only is September twenty-sixth, that's a Tuesday, we have three weeks. And then the local election is November seventh, twenty twenty-three, so I'm assuming if you're watching this meeting, you're already voting, but just a reminder for everyone else so you can share it. Thank you.
Alright, with that, we're on to reports of committee, ordinance committee. Thirty-eight A, Commandant Orange, referred an order from Kathleen Deegan, Declaration of Trust Agreement, recommended be adopted. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, our discussion.
Thank you. So we all received a very technical chunk of paperwork that is state language for the establishment of a fund such as this, and we had some general discussion that it would be a wise thing to do to be funding the benefits in the similar way that we've established other funds in the past. So once the committee had enough time to sort of wade through the technical language, we did have our city attorney give us an overview of it and basically stipulate to us that it is the state language that we're adopting tonight.
Anyone further? So motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the pass be ordained, the clerk will call a roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the language.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Poello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote to approve that. Thirty-eight B, Commandant Orange, has referred a special permit application for Red Barn Growers LLC to operate marijuana manufacturing establishment at one Cabot Street, recommended that the special permit be granted with the following conditions: that the owner of the building always pay commercial property tax rates at an extent allowed by federal, state, local laws for duration of the permit; that the building retain a minimum of thirty percent of Hoyoc residents for non-security jobs; that hiring preference be given to security personnel who are retired police, Hoyoc police officers, or retired members of another police department who now live in the city; there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on site; that hours of operation set by ordinance; that the applicant must abide by master of general law of Cannabis Control Commission; that the petitioner applicant shall confirm with the city and state health laws and rules and regulations that a substantial progress that has occurred within two years of issuance of the special permit extension shall be required; that the operation of special begins after the completion of the host community agreement or approve or a waiver. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and approve the special permit with the conditions as read. And I just want to note that this is the first application that got sort of stuck in the middle of the changes with the Cannabis Commission Regulations and the updates to our host community agreement, and that is why we're recommending this with the unusual addition of number nine, but it's to give them an opportunity to move forward should they be able to obtain a waiver until those details are ironed out for the host agreement.
Anyone further? Motion is to approve based on those conditions, the clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with conditions.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Out of the room.
Oh, abstained, sorry. Poello?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one abstained.
Your vote to approve that one?
Mr. President, if we can take, suspend rules and take thirty-eight, C and D as a package, please.
Motion to suspend rules, take up C and D as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C is Commandant Orange, a handicap sign be placed at nineteen Worcester Place for, so it's recommended be adopted. And handicap sign at five sixty-five South Canal Street, recommend that be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Yes, so the motion is to receive and to pass the first reading for both.
Motion to receive, pass first reading, our discussion.
These were vetted by our Disabilities Commission and recommended for approval, and it was an adequate location for them.
Seeing no one else, motion is pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor? All opposed?
Motion to that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call a roll if you vote yes, you're voting for C and D.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Poello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote to approve those two. Thirty-eight E, Commandant Orange, has referred the city council to adjust the sewer rate ordinance, having considered the same, oh, sorry.
Mr. President, oh no, I didn't mean to interrupt you reading it.
So recommended be adopted, recommended at eight dollars and two cents. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna object to us taking this up tonight for two reasons. One, we received the legal form at five thirty tonight, and two, the legal form is incorrect.
So motion is to table.
Make a motion that we receive the committee report and adopt. Second.
Mr. President? Was there a motion for a table? Yes. Counselor Jordan?
Just so we're all aware of Rule Nine J, one member objects, it has to be tabled. Anything, any legal form that comes in within forty-eight hours, and here it happened to be wrong too, to boot, so there's really no need for a vote, it's an automatic, under our rules.
There's that, but two, there was a motion for a table, I did hear second, so that been stopping the debate, but two rules are on the floor, that's why I was just confirming if there was a second.
Second.
So there was a motion to table, it was seconded, that stops the debate, that's the rules. So on the motion to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Cheers and doubt, motion, not motion...
Yes is more than one?
Hold on, hold on.
If it was anything over zero, it passes, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, just so we're all clear of the rule.
So motion was to table? Show of hands. One, two, three, four. So, if you voted to table.
Okay.
And so there wasn't enough to table.
Uh, hold on.
Hold on, stop. Counselor McGivern, you had a question?
Motion on the floor is to receive the committee report and adopt, and I just want to address the rule and the typo within the ordinance change, which is not unprecedented or unheard of, and it's a simple fix. The typo is the difference of eight dollars and five cents should be eight dollars and two cents per one thousand dollars gallons. The language of the ordinance that we received tonight, the only difference from what the actual language is, is the eight dollars and two cents. So there's nothing that we needed to receive that far in advance, and there's something that we have in the past allowed the solicitor present to initial off on the, on a change for a typo itself. I think this is an important discussion to have this evening, regardless of what we do, I think we all understand the ramifications and consequences are pretty heavy.
Counselor Jordan, you had your hand up.
Yes, I had my hand up, Mr. President, because we have rules and we are makers of law and makers of history, God love us all, we can all have our opinions, but we have a rule, if legal form is not provided forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, upon objection of any member of the city council, the matter will be tabled until the next meeting.
That's correct, okay, don't, don't point, I'm a strong reader.
Not making it up.
Counselor Bacon?
Well, I was only going to read the rule, and Counselor Jordan has already accomplished that. And I would further note that we had the meeting of the ordinance committee on August twenty-second, we had debating committee, we had very little attendance from the remainder of the counselors, and this is a matter that is serious, and the budget has been a moving target for the sewer fund, and there is debate relative to how the fund can be funded. And so, given all of those things, there was no reason why, A, it was late, and B, granted, the error is small, but it's kind of becoming a pattern that we have to table things to have them corrected. And, call me a stickler if you will, but we made this rule because we were getting everything very, very late, and it became problematic because people had not had time to read things. And this is just why we made the rule, exactly why. And this is a serious issue, and we've had rates ranging from seven dollars and some odd cents to eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, to now the eight oh two, and it's been a moving target, and we have not voted on the budget for the sewer fund yet, the final budget, we're still waiting for that. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
So, real quick, so for the sake of transparency and for the sake of people at home to understand what is happening right now, right? It seems like we are procrastinating and pushing something back because, and something we already know and we spoke of clearly in the meeting, because someone accidentally put a eight oh five instead of eight oh two and didn't send it on time? Just to be clear, because it kind of feels like we're blocking process, right? We're blocking due process. Rules, we made the rules, we can change them. Yes or no? Is that not true? We are as a body, we can create our own rules, right? Did we not make the rules?
Yes, we did.
And as a body, we can vote on altering the rule too, right?
Yes.
Yes or no? So, just real quick, for clarification and transparency, we are literally procrastinating something that is important for the city, for the sake, not because we don't understand it, not because we received it a couple hours ago and I never got to read it and I didn't understand what was coming through, because that was the actual purpose of the forty-eight hour rule, not something that you've already been discussing in the last few meetings, but something that actually just suddenly comes up that you have not even had a lick of time to even think of, right? But at the end of the day, for the sake of that, I just want to make sure that the people understand what this is right now, right? Because it doesn't make sense to me. I, I get, I get the rule, and I get the fact that things should be perfect, right? But it's been time and time again that we're stopping things off of a technicality, but But we proceed, thank you guys.
Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had a lengthy discussion in ordinance about this. Our meetings are recorded, so anyone who wants to watch can. I have, I know for a fact that I tend to miss parts of meetings, sometimes entire meetings, and then they turn into podcasts. So I just listen to them on my way to do other things, like long finance meetings or ordinance meetings that go on till midnight. This, this topic was a big part of why that meeting went till midnight. So to say that this is like a new topic, or, you know, things, the, the amount we were debating bounced around, it's, it's not, it's not a hundred percent accurate. Once again, we're prolonging the inevitable. I don't understand why, I do understand that rules are rules, so, you know, I'm gonna keep that in mind because every time something gets here and it hasn't come in two days before, we need it, I'm gonna remember that now and just be like, you know what? Maybe I just don't like this, I wanna kick it down the road to the next meeting. Why? Because there's a one-number typo on it, it just doesn't make sense. I'm not an obstructionist, so I don't, I don't do things like that. Um, but I understand that we wanna figure out new and improved ways to dwindle this down or change it. City needs this money, the sewage department needs this money to get things done, we all know that. And anyone who didn't pay attention to that ordinance meeting, I suggest you go watch it because if this doesn't get voted on tonight, it will get voted on again in two weeks or, you know, at our next meeting. So, yeah, let's just, let's just let it sit here a little more and so we can just wait for a typo to change. Thanks.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, I think a lot of people missed the debate because the meeting was unfortunately, and to some degree unnecessarily prolonged that night. But there is a fundamental disagreement as to whether that rate needs to be increased from seven dollars and fifty cents to eight dollars and two cents. And so, to the counselor's point, I think it is fair that all of the counselors, having now been aware of what the rate proposed is, will have an opportunity to go back and watch the tape and listen to the debate, and then come in and be able to make an informed vote. And we can agree to disagree, I have no problem with that. But I do think we need to follow our own rules, which we've had a recent history of just throwing out the window. We made them for a reason, this is a serious matter, it is going to have a big impact on the ratepayers and the taxpayers. So, yes, it is important, I hope everybody does watch the meeting before we take it up at our next meeting. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm more interested in finding how time-sensitive this is, and I would like to suspend the rules and allow Mary Mararti to speak a little bit how time-sensitive this is.
Mary Monahan.
Oh, did I say Mararti, Monahan, sorry.
Second, I'll second that.
The other.
Alright, so there is a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I think the top and then tap it.
Now it's on.
Yeah, we go.
Okay, thank you. So, for some clarification as to the consequences of delaying tonight's vote, I do understand that there was some technical error, eight dollars and two cents versus eight oh-three. But to respond to some of the statements that were already made, there's been no uncertainty as to the rates that are currently being proposed. New data, new financial data, new understanding of what occurred in FY twenty-three is what's supporting the proposed FY twenty-four rate. The Division of Local Services, in our conversations with them, are requiring that the city council vote a balanced budget for the enterprise fund before they'll certify this year's tax rate. So this is delaying that, the eight oh-two represents that balanced budget. And then the other issue associated with this is this delay potentially puts off the billing cycle. So the eight oh-two rate is based on the number of billings left in the fiscal year. So any delay in the billings would likely increase that rate in order to accommodate the fiscal year. So just to clarify the consequences that could be associated with this delay.
Alright. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, and thank you, 'cause I just wanted to make sure, especially, you know, taxpayers were listening and watching these meetings, that you state that, because it's important that when we vote on this, that these are the consequences that will hit every constituent that votes for us. Thank you so much.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti?
Thanks, I was gonna see if Mary could help provide some clarification, so that's great, um, appreciate it. This is the kind of stuff that drives me nuts about being on the city council. We, that meeting was so long, and I was there, I was there until eleven forty-five, like you all were, because I knew that this was important and not being informed was gonna impact taxpayers and... I mean, this is what drives me wild about city council. Um, so, I mean, I guess if that's, if it's a rule and we're all cool with it, I think the rule is really when you have like a document that's like seven pages long and there's this amendment and there's that amendment, this is literally like a sentence. I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, so I guess, um, I don't know. If we have to delay it, that, I mean, also, we're not meeting, we're meeting once in September. Like, that is also wild to me, while I'm on it, thank you.
Alright, so hold on, before we go to second time around. Just to be clear, for those who are at home and watching, 'cause I do get texts, trying to make sure people understand what's going on. When the order came up, it was read, it was deferred to Counselor Bacon for a report, of which, there was a motion to table. And that's why I was waiting to hear a second, I missed it and asked for it, and then there was two competing voices. So for clarity, I said, was there a second? And since there was, debate stops. That's the rule, when you make a motion to table, and that's what we did. That did not carry, which then goes back to, I heard Counselor McGivern first, and then Counselor Jordan. Counselor McGivern made his statement, Counselor Jordan made his statement. And Counselor Jordan's statement is correct. It is nine J. Nine J clearly states, and it was something that we adopted on two-one twenty-twenty-two, ordinance shall not be drawn into legal form unless the ordinance committee has taken a vote on that matter. It did. Legal form for the ordinance change shall be provided forty-eight hours prior to a city council meeting. If legal form is not provided prior to the meeting, upon an objection of any member, not seven, not five, any member of the council, the matter will be tabled until the next meeting. That's the rule that you adopted, two-one twenty-twenty-two. A member has objected, so the matter is tabled. I'm allowing people to kind of catch up on what happened, that was the procedure that went around the rule. With that, yep, hold on. With that, next was Counselor Jordan, then Counselor Bacon, then I see Counselor Rivera. Just trying to catch everyone up here. Here we go, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, I'll, I'll try to be brief. It was a very good discussion, very thoughtful in the ordinance committee, a lot of good points made by everybody. I mean, for those of us, on, on, you know, my viewpoint of this is I'm not in favor. So, you know, that's probably not a newsflash to too many in the room, that I'm not in favor of this sewer rate increase. My reasons, and so as far as delaying it a month, as far as I'm concerned, keep delaying it for many, many months, uh, I don't want it to see a pass. So if this delays it for an extra month and I get to save my constituents a month of sewer rate increases, all the better. Um, that's, that's the name of the game here. But as far as, I, I hope it doesn't pass, period. Uh, I'm very transparent about my position on this issue. Um, as far as the ordinance committee in terms of the merits of it, the reason I don't accept the logic behind the adoption of this, this fifty-two cent increase on the residents, is because of the fact that there's a number of things being funded to balance the budget of the sewer account. There's quite a number of expenses that need to be pulled out of there that are being funded out of the sewer account that should be funded by the general fund. And the reason I'm concerned about that, and will continue to be concerned about that, is it's a circumvention of Proposition two and a half, which has a cap, it has a levy ceiling, that says on the property taxes, only this much can be taxed. So the current effort, it appears, is to put all these items, whether they deserve to be in the sewer fund or not, into the sewer fund because under law, there is no cap to how much you can set the sewer rates. So the, to taxpayers, they get the double whammy, they lose the local control over their own tax system. Because if we're allowed to start sticking non-s sewer items into the sewer fund, then you can tax to the max on the property tax and they'll go and whack them as much as possible unlimited, saying, "We need this to balance the budget." I give a number of examples. Point number one is approximately six hundred thousand dollars would be proposed to be raised in additional taxes on the citizens of this city by, so people understand what fifty-two cents, that's six hundred thousand dollars more of your tax money, uh, pass the hat. And everybody is expected to, to chip into that. And that's to pay for things like street sweeping, which shouldn't be in there in the first place. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars? You asked, "Well, how much does it cost?" We can't tell you, okay? We don't know because Viola won't tell us. Alright, well, go find out, they're looking for a new contract. MS four-related expenses, a number of those should not, or a significant portion of that should not be funded out of the sewer account, should be funded out of the general fund. Again, if these things were happening, you wouldn't need a sewer increase. Point number three, you have a number of culver and other types of repairs that are needed to the streets. Those aren't sewer-related, they call them sewer-related because it's on the street and it's street runoff water? Well, by that logic, why don't we put all the paving of all the streets in the sewer fund? By that logic, it's a, it's like saying, well, manholes have to be, or covers, or the light pole, or the sidewalks, anything that touches stormwater is now in the sewer fund, this is what they're doing. So for those of us that do take and have a perception of fiscal conservatism in this budget, I wanna make sure that we're protecting these legal constraints about a runaway local government and the taxes that come from them. So, we can have a debate, I support this ten and a half million dollar bond that is needed to, to do these, but we're gonna have to have a debate over how that's funded, these CSO improvements. The fact of the matter is, we should be funding a good number of these things out of the general fund, balancing the budget, which meets the DLS requirement. It's a question of what pot do we take this money out of? And I'm concerned, things are going in here as a circumvention to the property tax system so residents get hit without these legal protections in place. And in the end, they have a way of backdoor increasing your taxes over and over and over again, and they just call it a sewer increase. And I'm wise to that, and that's why in good conscience, I'm not voting for it. I won't vote for it in a month from now. Now, there is, happens to be a rule here that I can stop it tonight. If there's another rule in a month, I'd use that rule too. I'm very transparent, I'm against it, point blank. The system needs to be fixed, the way we fund all of this needs to be fixed, and when that's fixed, we'll move on to other solutions. But I have not been convinced this fifty-two cent increase is needed for residents. So that's my good faith reason, thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So under the suspension of rules, because I've had mixed understanding from at least one member on the committee, and so if we could clarify from Mary, is the cost of the bond that we're voting on tonight included in the eight oh-two recommended rate? Because I have heard yes and I've heard no.
Okay. No, it's not, because that's a future bond issue. The city council's being asked to approve the city entering into an agreement with the Clean Water SRS, the State Revolving Fund, in order to bond that, that could be eighteen months from now. And in the meantime, just to speak to that, we'll be looking for other funding sources. So this budget for FY twenty-four does not include future payments, that could be FY twenty-five, twenty-six, or later.
Thank you. And so, I would just remind the body, so that's coming in about a minute in the life of the history of the city. That will be, as I'm understanding, another fifty percent, fifty cent increase roughly on the rate, and that's for the ten million, after which there will be another ten million. So you see how this is going. And so, I think it's important for us to address the bond question, and also under that discussion, talk about where that bond will sit. Because if it's gonna sit in the general fund, then it won't have as extreme an effect on the sewer rate. And yes, this is now, this is this, but we have to be thinking further ahead than this, right now. Because our residents are getting really squeezed under all the costs going up, and we need to be sensitive to that. Thank you.
Mary?
If I could just follow up on that, um, and again, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Bacon, you brought up good points of, of things that had been included in the sewer rate for at least the past seventeen years. They weren't dumped into the sewer enterprise account this fiscal year budget. So if we recall from the ordinance committee, that discussion occurred, where the Board of Public Works is totally supportive of that study, to pull out of the enterprise fund and find a, a cost associated with the MS four work, a cost associated with the long-term debt, and a cost associated with even the flood control projects. So that, um, again, a discussion with the public can occur over these are the costs of these various services. And the city council, with public input, can then make a decision how they wanna allocate those funds. If the council historically has, historically, the council put those expenses into the enterprise fund. So you can take them back out, but that proposed study coming from the Board of Public Works is needed in order to identify what those are. And with respect to the long-term debt service, that would also be part of that study. Do you wanna break out some of the CSO debt, share it with the taxpayer, keep it with the ratepayer? Or put it all on the taxpayer? So those discussions are being proposed. So what the counselors are looking for is actually an active request by the Board of Public Works in order to move forward for FY twenty-five.
So Counselor Rivera is next.
Uh, so, thank you, Mary, you kind of made some of the points I was gonna make with regards to us trying to fund a study that would help us identify what it would cost for the M four, um, stuff, what it would cost for the sewage, um, and what it would cost to be able to extract a lot of that out of the, um, out of the sewage, uh, fund to be able to put it wherever it needs to be put. I guess for me, though, it's, it, it, this is the way we've been doing things for the last, like, set, couple decades, right? We're, 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 we're trying to save money, we're trying to do things that are the best way fiscally for the community, but look at where we're at, right? Um, we're in a point where we owe money, instead of actually operating an enterprise fund that actually makes money, it actually owes money, and it has owed money for several years now. Um, at the end of the day, we have a variety of different issues that we're not catching up with, we're not keeping up with, not just in DPW, but a variety of different departments across the city. So to continue to say that, like, this is good for the city, this approach that we've been taking for decades now, I think that's us continuing to practice, what's it called? Um, there's a, there, there's an analogy to this, right? Where, um, you finally realize that, or if you don't realize it, then there's a real problem, right? That you, you're getting in your own way, and you kind of can't figure it out because you're not realizing that there is a problem. So, to me, in a sense, we're talking in circles, and if we will block this today, and it'll be hopefully postponed for a month, you're not saving the money 'cause at the end of the day, it sounds like the rates are gonna go up if we block it today. So if we do approve it later on down the road, now you're just gonna make the argument like, "See, it's cost more money because we blocked it for a month, of course it's gonna cost more money." Like, you intentionally blocked it so that it costs more money, so that way when you present it, it's harder for us to vote on it, 'cause now the cost is not eight oh-five or eight oh-two, the cost is probably nine dollars because of the postponement of this one particular month. So there are games being played, gamesmanship is cool, but it's not cool at the cost of the city. That's the piece for me, right? And it's unfortunate that there are some people that are walking away from the council that can help and have helped for years, right? And there are others that are gonna take advantage of the knowledge and the gamesmanship of the situation to put themselves in a better position versus putting the city in a better position. Thank you.
Counselor Mal Navales?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my points are, so this is, this was discussed twice in committee. Um, the first time, they brought in an eight fifty-eight, that wasn't good enough, second time, they brought a seven eighty-eight, or actually, first time, they brought an eight fifty or a seven eighty-eight, neither of them worked, they needed to find something else, so they came back with an eight oh-two. I think to a lot of what other counselors' point is, like, we need to start making a decision, and we need to make the decision, if not tonight, just based on the rules, then fine, next month. But regardless of what I'm hearing tonight, is that there's certain counselors are gonna say no regardless, so right now, we're just, to what Counselor Rivera said, talking in circles, that's all we're doing because honestly, we have them, we have the votes for the eight oh-two. So the votes are gonna happen next month. So the votes are going to happen next month. At the end of the day, like, we need to start paying for things in our city. That's how the city's going to operate. This is how the city's going to work. Like, we can't keep, like, not paying our bills. Things are breaking down, and we're expecting them to just, money just pop out of the thin air? Because what I'm not hearing is the alternative. I hear a lot of no's, but what's the alternative? Because the reality is, a lot of new counselors here are wanting to hear a lot of alternatives. Because, shoot, the veteran counselors that aren't here, we have been listening to y'all. But for this particular issue, all we hear is no, and there's no alternative. The Board of Public Works brought us a solution, brought us a study that will be getting invested in, so we can invest in our city. That's how we make a city in a capitalist society better, by investing the money that we have. So, you know, I'm bored with the eight oh two, just given all the different options that were given, with realizing, yes, we do have to have more transparency. We should know how the street sweeping is being spent, how much money all is being spent. But we can do both at the same time. You know, to the, to the earlier counselor's point, like, it's not all cookie cutter, right? So, like, right here, this is an example of, like, let's, I guess we're not voting on it tonight, based on what the president said, but let's vote on something, and let's move it forward so the better of our city. We need to start investing in our city, and the, what you invest is the money of the people putting into our city. There's a reality of it. We can't get nice stuff if we don't invest. That's just the reality of it. So, thank you to the Board of Public Works for coming to two meetings, and really giving us an awesome presentation, and I hope that we can do better. Thank you.
Counsel Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that's not new to me, I think, from the beginning, right, Counsel Jordan? Quarterback, remember the quarterback?
Quarterback of privatization.
And I was on the ordinance committee when me and two of my colleagues actually voted down the increase, and they put things in the paper about not vote these people out of office, because they're, and you know what I'm talking about. This isn't easy, and I respect everybody's opinion in this board, I really do. You know, everybody's hardworking, and I can, we can agree to disagree, right? And you'll maybe never vote for this, whether it comes out next month or the month after, so. And before I got to this meeting, you know, when I got this today, and I knew it was coming up, and one other thing, I just want to state that, some of us don't make it down every meeting, and to the chair of the ordinance committee, I did watch that meeting until about quarter, I think it was about quarter twelve, was it?
Yeah.
Something like that. The debate, and this is something that's not, you know, it's been going on for a couple months anyways. And I talked to Ms. Monahan before the meeting, and I knew something was going to happen tonight with this, you know, because of the number being off. I was aware of that, so, and I'm glad she spoke up tonight about this. The only, and rules are rules. I respect that. We're all part of this. We can change rules, we make rules, and the president stated, if there's one person objects, because we got this late, we have to put it off, we have to table it. But my thought is, if we do table this, and we get the new number to us soon, within this week, maybe we'll get it tomorrow. And we have that special meeting in a couple weeks, that we can have this vote on this, and this could be effective still on August first. So that's, that's my thought. Hopefully, that can get done, and that would be good for everybody. And take the vote and see where it lands.
Yep.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot has been said this evening, and almost everything has been said this evening, outside of procedure, has been, was, and was part of the lengthy discussion in the ordinance committee, which was, I commend the committee, a very healthy discussion. I know, not about procedure first, but I know a couple things that were brought up in the meeting have not yet to be said. One of the reasons that we're trying to reconcile the wastewater treatment plant budget itself is it's running in deficit again. Now, with the problems going on in the Treasurers Department, that number is a bit of a moving target, and unfortunately, I don't think they reconciled all the revenue that's coming in, and it was creeping up towards the one million dollar mark, which means, if we don't do something very quickly, anything that's running in a deficit, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the rate tonight, can and will be paid from the city side of the budget, which includes people who live in West Hoyoke and Smith Ferry, who don't have sewers. And that's one of the reasons why we need to adjust the rate. We talked about the line item for sewer repairs, it was very high last year, and the chair of the committee and others brought that up to the DPW officials, and yes, we understand some of that is one time. We also, as a city council, voted to correct some of that with other revenue itself, but we still put two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into that budget annually for anticipated sewer breaks. We could talk forever about, we've already voted to take the street sweeping out of the budget. We don't control it. You know, the mayor does, and the DPW commission does, and they've ignored that now for almost two years. And the reason it was in there was that at a point in time, when there is some logic to it, because the wastewater treatment plant, you know, the purpose of it is to treat the water before it goes into the Connecticut River, to make it safe to put it into the Connecticut River. Unfortunately, because of the age of our city, our sewers are combined with stormwater, we all understand that, and all of it ends up down there, and there's a lot of treatment because of the amount that goes through that plant that takes place on a daily basis. And it also causes the problem when there's heavy rainfalls, of not being able to store it and be, and holding on to it before it can be treated, and then dumped into the Connecticut River. It's something we all want to do. But I think what we all want to do is get the correct rate, balance the budget, so that taxpayers versus ratepayers aren't always arguing about this. And it's, I think the most important thing that the chair of the commission said tonight is, it's a quarterly billing. First quarter's already gone out. You know, it's, we need to get this in a reasonable time to allow the water department, which creates the bill, to get the next quarter out in a timely fashion, so we don't create a bigger deficit for next year. We argued or discussed and debated the amount. I think all the questions were answered. Not everybody's going to agree about the eight dollars and two cents, but it will balance the budget, and there is a cap on the rate itself. State law will not let us collect revenue that goes above, and I'm going to throw out a percentage, although I'm not sure, but that goes above, goes above, I think it's five percent, or it might be ten percent, of total revenue collected in one year. And that means that we could create a stabilization fund within the wastewater, matter of fact, there is one, within the wastewater treatment plant, but we can't set a rate that goes above a certain, that collects above a certain limit. So I'm advocating that we vote on this this evening, because we've discussed the merits, the positions we've taken. I don't think the outside of procedure, that, and outside of the three cent difference in this language of the ordinance itself, is what should be being debated tonight. I think it's just time to take a vote, because we've all done our homework, we've all taken our position as to where and why we stand in one place. And with that in mind, Mr. President, I make a motion that we suspend Rule Nine J.
Second. So, hold on, hold on. Before we get to motion to suspend rules, Counsel Vacan wanted to speak again. This will be for your third time. Motion would be allowed to speak. All those in favor? All opposed? Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. So, I want to speak directly to the mischaracterization of those of us who are not in favor of this eight oh two rate. In the meeting, when we looked at the operations of the sewer fund, yes, five years out of ten, sometimes it was in a deficit, sometimes it was not in a deficit. This past year, that is used as the shining example, was the most significant year of emergency capital expense repairs in the history of the sewer fund, at over seven hundred thousand dollars. And that's what pushed it into deficit. On the operation side, from just the day-to-day operations, notwithstanding that, which would have fallen into an emergency use of funding, under even our stabilization fund rules, our general stabilization fund rules, highly unusual and not, hopefully, to be repeated. So if you back that out, back up to the last time we had this debate, and the proposed rate was eight dollars and five cents then, and we said no, and we ended up settling on a seven dollar and fifty cent rate, which on the operational side was in balance. So if back then, we had gone with the fifty-five cents higher, those who think more should be paid out of the sewer fund would have been happy, but nobody's been worried about the six hundred people, homeowners in Ward Five, when they're talking about adding a stormwater fee. They think they should all contribute on that. The reality is, everybody out there has already been contributing when they needed to, to help to balance the sewer fund, and I haven't heard them complaining about that. Having said that, I do agree that it isn't fair. It's not fair that they should subsidize it, and it's not fair either that they should have to pay for services they can't receive, unless we're going to create a fund to help people with septic that can't access the sewer with those costs. But having said all that, to take a conservative approach, to say, "No, you're eight oh five, because now you're rolling in two thirty-five, two hundred thirty-five thousand instead of, what, one thousand, or ten thousand, or something that was ridiculously low. So now, we're going to go up to the two thirty-five." So what we're arguing is, there is a lower rate than the eight oh two that would have been okay. We were in the process of debating the eight fifty-eight and the seven something in committee, when we then got the updated budget proposal that said, "Well, now we included this, and DLS said that, so the seven dollar something turned into eight oh two." And so the only rate that we really were debating in that committee meeting was the eight oh two. And what I have said to the people I represent and which they support, is the lowest possible rate to achieve the balance. I don't think eight oh two is that. I think the other rate, the seven some odd dollar rate, was that. But we're not even having an opportunity to even finish that debate, because people, the majority of the committee is fixed on the eight oh two now. So, it is what it is, but there's no reason, on this green earth, why we got anything late from the Law Department relative to any ordinance changes tonight. We met on August twenty-second. Thank you.
All right. So there is a motion to suspend the rules for being able to take this up. You go to eight L. No rule or standing order of the council shall be suspended unless two-thirds of the members present consent thereto, nor shall any rule or order be repealed or amended without given notice thereof at a preceding meeting, nor unless a majority of the whole council concurs therein. So, motion is to suspend the rules. Was there anything in a preceding meeting to bring that up? Oh, I don't think there was, but Counsel Jordan had a question, a question or a comment?
A little, a comment, because...
Hold on. Counsel Jordan wants to speak for a third time. Motion to suspend the rules to allow Counsel Jordan to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Jordan?
I'd like to hear what he has to say before we vote to suspend the rules.
That's why I gave clarification first, Counsel Jordan.
Just so we're all clear on a unanimous consent, suspension, you need unanimous consent to suspend a rule relative to unanimous consent. Just so we're all clear on that. If that's where I think this is going, it's not ten votes to take away the right of one person to object, otherwise, that completely defeats the rules. That would be in Roberts Rules of Order. So we should be careful on that point, right? Because then, by that virtue, no rule that has the objection of one person would ever have that, right? It would always be two-thirds. Just so we understand why that rule exists in Roberts. Second, second point is, I don't want to rehash the points that were all made in ordinance. I would encourage people to go back and listen to that discussion. We had a review. I have not been on board with this current system since two thousand and five. I was, myself, Counsel Tomlin, others, we led the charge against the system we have today. This is exactly what has occurred, folks. It's a black box. You say, "How much for street sweeping? Can't tell you." Great question. And by the way, Mary does a great job on the commission, and we're lucky to have her leadership. The point is, this is technically twenty-one-year contracts. It's not a twenty-year contract. They could terminate this contract every year on one year's notice. The city has elected not to do that for its own reasons, the people in power, I've had no persuasion over that. These questions, we keep saying, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to put over on the city side." This thing could be balanced with city-side property tax revenue, as it should be, without increasing these taxes. That's the whole point, folks. It's not an issue of what's the bills, but be transparent about where the money is coming from, okay? You can't just keep raising these rates and say, "Well, what exactly am I getting?" You're getting the one check that we send every year to Viola, that we have no idea how it's calculated, and we have no idea really where it's all going. That, that's the point, okay? That's it in a nutshell. And if we could take out, and I assure you, those costs that I illuminated earlier, those three buckets, that's more than six hundred thousand dollars. So therefore, if that's not justified, how can I justify to give six hundred thousand more on top of that? See the point? So, that's the, that's the reservation on this side of the table, for those that hold a different view. And so, until I'm made with a persuasive argument. Now, the good news is, the people that are now in charge are taking steps to unravel this system, to give us a more transparent system, to do all this. The mayor, everybody, their heart is all in the right place. But the fact of the matter is, I in good conscience cannot say, "Here's another six hundred thousand dollars," when I've already pointed out, these, these costs should be paid out of the general fund. And what you're essentially doing is giving yourself a tax override through the use of the sewer fund. That's the point. And I'm saying, that's not okay, and we got to stop doing that. And if we don't do, and I won't even get into the points about inflation, and the cost on people, and all, I mean, I could go, you could really get me going on that stuff all night. So, those are my points. Everybody is allowed to have their difference of opinion, and you can call tax increases investments, and yes, to invest, and we had that in two thousand and nineteen, and there's people that have different perspectives on these. It makes us diverse and holistic in our approach on these issues. You, you know my general persuasion is, only tax that which we need to, and not a penny more, but not a penny less either, and that we are properly doing what we need to do for infrastructure. But that's my point on that. But as far as this rule change, or the suspension of the rules, I think I made my point initially, Mr. President. If any, my opinion is, if anybody objects to the rule suspension, that defeats that.
Counsel Valles.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I just heard was, the people that are running this city, we, they're doing a great job, they're trying to unravel the mess that has been created before many of us got on here to lead the city. The people that are leading the city are asking us for this. So at what point, I guess, do we trust, do we truly actually trust the people leading the city, or are we just, as pointed out before, obstructing progress, obstructing the work that needs to be done in order to make the city better? So I just need to ask, need us to ask ourselves those questions. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel McGivern?
More of just, just a clarification, or certainly not to tell you how to make your ruling, Mr. President, but we have a rule. Rules can be suspended. Roberts Rules only comes into effect when we don't have a rule. And if we don't go to Roberts Rules, if we have rules that address the situation, which I believe we do, and I believe we can suspend it.
So, looking at eight L, and then looking at nine J, eight L would allow you by two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, to then act on a matter. Where I'm having issue is, if you look at nine J, it says, "If a member of the council objects, the matter will be tabled until the next meeting." It's a requirement. So, to me, even if you were to suspend rules, we are required to, in essence, it's almost like a table, and that's why I went through the procedures. She require, or count, not she, but Counsel Vacan requested it to be tabled. It was seconded, but that failed. And then it went to the back and forth between the two counselors. This is not technically a table, per the order that Counsel Vacan did. However, the requirement is... However, the requirement is that it must be tabled after a person objects. So my ruling is 9J would hold.
Is this a point of inquiry?
Yep.
I mean, with that logic, I understand, and I, George, I don't want to tell you how to do, how to make your ruling, but do we get the vote? Because we get the vote on a motion to table. But the motion is to suspend rules.
It says, "If, if a member..."
Motion to table says it lays on a table without discussion. You know, our rule says, like I said...
I understand what you're saying.
One of our rules says, "We can suspend rules."
I, I agree with you, but at the same time, the way 9J is written, once again, I didn't write it, but I'm reading it, and it's a requirement. Will. Table it. So therefore, it, it, the way you address these issues is, one, leave and come back, give us an opinion later, but at the same time, if you don't like that drafting, file an order, says charter and rules, and amend the sentence. So my ruling is, 9J would hold, a member has objected, and therefore, it's tabled to the next meeting, of which it can be taken up at a special meeting.
Mr. President, I object to your ruling and ask that the full city council vote on it.
All right, so motion has been objected to my ruling. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so motion is that my ruling's out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Um, chairs in doubt? All those in favor that my ruling is not correct? Show hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Need nine, don't you?
This is the problem.
Need nine?
Yeah.
So...
So there you go.
On to, that was 38E, which is tabled pursuant to 9J. 38F, command and order to refer the, do we do F? No, handicap sign at 2, be removed at 282 Pine Street. Recommend it be adopted.
Can we do that as a package with 38G? F and G? Is that possible, Madam Chair?
Well, one's leave to withdraw, one's to recommend.
Right, no, the other, we have to do the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, what, no, do F, yeah, put, do F first. This one is to recommend and put the sign in. So, recommend, recommended that be adopted, 282 Pine Street. Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that is to remove the sign because it's no longer needed, so...
Right, remove, sorry.
So, the motion is to pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting to remove the sign.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
He's out of the room.
Okay. Hartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
12As, unanimous vote.
With that, you approve that one. 38G, 36A Resnick Boulevard, handicap sign be placed here, but this is to give leave to withdraw.
On motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion to receive, adopt, that be given leave to withdraw under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. And yes, this is recommended to give leave to withdraw because it turned out that it was all property on private property that the city doesn't have jurisdiction on that might be available.
All right, so leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? H, command and order to refer to special permit application for small Wonders LLC 109 Lyman Street Manufacturing, leave to withdraw by request of the applicant, Counsel Bacon.
The motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and accept their withdrawal of the special permit.
Motion is to receive, adopt, that it be given leave to withdraw by the applicant. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so now, on to Finance. 39A, Committee on Finance for refer that the sum of 10 million 500,000 appropriate to pay the cost of the Hoyoke River Terrace Sewer Project. This is recommended that be adopted, so this be receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counsel Bacon.
If we could just suspend the rules just for discussion, take up 39G at the same time?
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend rules, take up G as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? G, Command Finance for refer that the Board of Public Works, DPW, City Engineer, Auditor, Treasurer, update the city finance committee regarding the recent sewer breaks in the sewer enterprise account, recommend be complied with. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick on 39G, this was in response to an order filed by Counsel Jordan that we get a report from the City Engineer, DPW, that addresses the, the sewer break, sewer enterprise account for the sewer breaks most recent. And that report was complied with. We had a good discussion with Chris Baker, our current, and I wish for much longer, City Engineer, and we all agreed that that was what the information that we were looking for. It does connect somewhat to some of what we're about to discuss. On the item 39A, is, is Finance Committee took it up, I believe, for our second, if not our third time. It's a request to bond in the amount of up to 10.5 million dollars. The crux of this bond would be for the paying of the Hoyoke CSO project known as the River Terrace Sewer Separation. This is the next big project. I think we've kind of did the prelude to this with the discussion we just had on the rate, but I think there's some information that needs to be shared quickly, and then we can certainly answer any questions. The, the project itself is, is a two-phase project, and this is part of the first phase. This actual project is looking at a construction getting closer to 2027, 2025 for, for, for the first part. The bonding itself, you know, as I think, I think we understand, would not be necessary until for a couple of years down the road, and certainly there'd be some bridge gap bonding, bonding prior to that. But a lot of this is current, is the design level is around 90%. It needs to be completed, and the city needs to be in position to have the funding to complete the project itself. We, we've gone over that with a fine-toothed cone. I think we understand that from our City Engineer, to our Board of Public Works Commission, to the study that's out there, and I think we all understand the issue itself, that the mandate of the Clean Water, Fresh Clean Water Act can be very costly if we don't stay up to date with DEP, if we don't stay up to date with a long-term plan and an implementation of that long-term plan. This is the next step. We're, you know, we've been doing this for many years. We talked about this evening, we talked about it in Finance, but this is the next step to, to take a vote that shows that the city has got its correct foot forward in terms of sewer separation projects themselves, and how we're gonna treat the sewage that goes into the Connecticut River. After River Terrace comes Springdale, which would be the next big one, that currently is projected sometime in 2030, 2035. Something to keep in mind, but something that's way down the road, and certainly the operations and maintaining of the, of the wastewater treatment plant is important. I think a very important discussion took place in Finance, started, a part of it was, we heard tonight from Counsel Jordan about where the funding source is for, for our debt obligations should come from, and, and certainly is an argument that needs to, to be heard, an argument that needs to be weighed out in the future before we get into the paying of, of this debt bond service. But, by adopting this this evening, we are, again, taking the, the correct step forward in terms of keeping with the mandate. Unfortunately, it's an unfunded mandate. We took a vote earlier this evening, and maybe that unfunded mandate down the road will become somewhat of a funded mandate from the federal government, but we can't wait for Congress to act. We have to do our job. Fines can total up to $5,000 a day. That's not a threat. I, I think the last thing they want to do is find a community that has these projected costs before them, but certainly, by taking this vote, again, we're taking steps that will lead towards our long-term plan and keep the, keep the feds off our case for a while. Committee recommends that we adopt it at this time.
All right, so 39G, that is complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to 39A, motion is to pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for 39A.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that. 39B, 48,045 dollars from capital stabilization to R&amp;V Vehicles, recommend be adopted. Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the, the, I'm sorry, we had Chris Baker before us and the mayor before us on that. Our, our DPW superintendent was unable to attend due to an illness. This, this is a request for a transfer out of capital stabilization the mayor put in front of us. The repair of motor vehicles in this particular would be a, one of the dump trucks, plowed dump trucks of the DPW. This truck, these trucks go for about 220,000 dollars apiece. It's in relatively good shape. There is some engine work that needs to be done. The bulk of the 48,000 dollars would be to, to replace the engine, which would keep this truck on the road, especially come December when we start to see those, hate to talk about it right now, when we start to see those snowflakes fly. Come on, I'm still barefooting in summer mood here. But at the same time, it makes sense. We're grateful with the, with the wisdom of Mayor Garcia that we have a capital stabilization fund, which is something we've recently grown to, to appreciate. So, the committee does recommend that we adopt the, adopt the transfer request.
See no one further, so pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 39C, capital stabilization, 19,045 dollars to professional engineering services, recommend be adopted. Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick and simple, the engineers before us, we all know that there are a number of unaccepted streets within the city of Hoyoke. Surprisingly bigger number than I think most of us ever thought. This particular project is Lynnan Drive and a, and a portion of Richard Eager Drive itself. By adopting this transfer from the capital stabilization fund, it would allow the engineering services to do the necessary survey and work that would allow the city to accept both Lynnan Drive and that portion of Richard Eager Drive as a, as a city street itself, which would then make it eligible for Chapter 90 monies and make it legal for the city to do work on, including plowing and so forth. Committee recommends that we adopt the transfer request.
Counsel Bacon.
I want to thank the committee for recommending the funding on this. The folks that have lived up there since the 60s thought the road was already in the book. And then, when DPW tried to go and do some road work up there, our new engineer had discovered that they weren't. And so, I'm very happy that our engineer, Chris Baker, took the initiative and brought this forward, and the residents will be thankful. Thank you.
Counsel Jordan?
Yeah, briefly, I just think it's great, one, that we're doing this, but this hopefully will begin a trend for the 100-ish roads that are in the city, or it's some number, it's pretty, pretty large, of unaccepted public ways. And so, as we move forward on, some probably never will be, but for those that can be like obvious ones, like Lynnan and Richard Eager, this is great for the city that we're doing this and getting these on the books. This, this is a long time coming, so this is great. Thank you.
So, motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for this transfer.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Out of the room.
Okay. McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
12As.
Your vote, you approve that. 39D, sick leave buyback, 121,879 to captains, recommend be adopted. Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had both Chief Pratt and Mayor Garcia before the committee to, to talk about this request. And the sick leave buyback, the projected amount of money that was budgeted is, is more than is needed because of some change in retirement plans and some change in formula, not formulas, but request from retirees where they can create a surplus because it can be carried over into another fiscal year. The request, this is a, this goes back to the budget hearings with the four captains. Part of this, Mayor Garcia tells us, was an era of which he takes and accepts the responsibility of where, we talked about the four captains in the budget, but the amount that was budgeted was not the correct amount in terms of what the, what his budget and what his future plans are to do. Even though we're changing the amount of captains, it needs to get through this, this fiscal year. The second part of it is, one, there was one retired, one captain retired, somewhat unexpected, but did retire. A second captain is on administrative, paid administrative leave, and there are, there are a couple vacancies. In order for the chief to get it back up to compliments, he needs this transfer to make the item full for the rest, rest of the fiscal year, so that the auditor will keep him, keep him out of trouble with the auditor itself. After a couple of innings of discussion, the committee came to, to grips with it, and we do recommend that the transfer be adopted.
See no one else? Just to read the note. To address a Scribner error. It's back.
We did not call it Scribner in Finance.
It's back. Just kidding. All right, so, motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Out of the room.
Out of the room.
Jenny Rivera? Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Do you want to take up E and F as a package? They're both complied with? Or no?
Uh, that, that's fine for discussion purposes, yes. We can always separate if we have to.
The mayor provide an update in the funding, uh, pedestrian safety signal at Hitchcock and Martin Street. Recommend being complied with. Thirty-nine F, uh, which was the petition for the CPA rate of one percent or one-point-five percent for the ballot, recommend be complied with. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Uh, on the, uh, the first one, the, uh, which is, I believe, is the, uh, Counselor Bartley's order on the, uh, funding, uh, looking for the funding of safety signals and so forth at Hitchcock and Martin Streets. This is very important. I think anyone that knows the history of this intersection, anyone that lives in War Three, anyone that travels Hitchcock and, and Martin Street, this is a very, over the years, unfortunately, proven dangerous, uh, intersection. Uh, somewhat of a blind sight from two approaches and, and the traffic and speed just, just, um, leads into a lot, a number of accidents, some that we, we wish wasn't part of a history, but some very unfortunate fatalities. Um, the city engineer did say, there was a bid that was, was, uh, fell apart, but the city engineers said this is high on the radar. They're looking for it. The mayor agrees. Uh, they are trying to work with it. Uh, Counselor Bartley could not be with us that evening, but we feel at this point the report satisfies the order with the promise that they are, they are looking to do something in the, uh, very near future.
Anyone else? Some motion that both are complied with, or?
Uh, I'm sorry, the second one was?
CPA.
Yeah, I, just real quick, because I think it just deserves a, a quick comment. Um, Counselor Bacon filed this order. Uh, a number of, uh, constituents did sign a petition and asked that the city council have a discussion about the CPA ballot vote itself. Uh, we know that the, the more recent history of a vote that was taken by this council, the, uh, the veto of the mayor, the fact that that's all on the table within, uh, within this council itself, uh, is all part of this, but we still felt it was prudent to have, or offered to have a discussion. We did have one resident, Stephen Roethberg, who came forward. Uh, in, in a nutshell, Stephen, uh, talked, uh, for a few, for a little bit, and, uh, it made it clear that he's not in favor of the CPA funding, and he thinks especially with the changes on the state level and the amount of available revenue coming through the, uh, the, the franchise tax, I think that's what they call it, or the administrative fees of the, uh, registry of deeds offices, that it's not the, uh, the same as it was in the beginning. But with that in mind, we just, we, uh, we believe the, uh, the order's been complied with at this point, and, uh, as I stated, the, uh, the ballot itself and the mayor's veto still remains in, uh, on the table in this committee, and, uh, that speaks for itself.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would note that out of no fault of the committees, their committee was delayed a half an hour on the start time, and so I think a number of people didn't really know what was going on because there was just nothing on channel fifteen. But I would note that a number of people in the two months that it had been tabled in this body had come in on Zoom and at the microphone expressing their opinions in this regard, but I thank the committee for taking it up, um, in compliance with our charter as required. Thank you.
See no one else? Both have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so forty-one A, command public service referred an order from the mayor, uh, appointing, uh, Mr. Parker to serve on the library, uh, board of directors. Uh, said term will expire February twenty-twenty-five. Recommend be confirmed. Counselor Tommen?
Thank you. I guess I better get moving. I said we'd be out of here before ten o'clock, so I'm gonna try to move this right along.
I told you.
Got about twenty minutes.
Seventy-eight.
Okay. I'm sorry I jinxed you, uh, uh, but, um, Mr. Parker came before us, said everybody got his resumes, like five pages. He was our finance director for the library since twenty-eleven, um, and it wasn't funded in the budget, so, um, sort of looking to try to get something, somebody in there with the library, um, to, to work the finances there. Um, he was been a member of the, the Friends of the Public Library from twenty-twelve, twenty-fifteen, and an officer twenty-twelve to twenty-fifteen. Um, he currently is at the McDuffie School in Granby, Mass. Um, and he's, uh, willing to give the time. I think it's once a month they meet for about an hour and a half. Uh, and he's, uh, knows a lot about the library. I mean, he's, he's well-versed in that, so the mayor made a good appointment in this, uh, position, so I recommend, uh, appointment, disappointment.
Anyone further? Some motion is approved, the appointment, which will expire February twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-one B, from the mayor, uh, letter appointment for DJ O'Connor, Linda Pratt, and several others to serve a three-year term, um, for recycling, advertise, uh, adverse, oh geez, the committee. I'm in a tough.
Advisory?
I'm drawn, I'm dying up here. Uh, recommend be confirmed. Counselor Tommen?
Yes, the new, new committee, uh, we got with the recycling committee. I'm sure, I don't know how many of you, uh, got the, uh, the, the card today in the mail about the new totes coming in, and we have to sort of, have to sort of look into ordinances about that with these totes that, uh, the city DPW be using, but, um, this recycling committee, we, um, I want to thank, um, our administrative assistant, Jeff, uh, for getting, get ahold of all these people, and apparently almost all of them are gonna make it. We had seven out of the ten people either in off, in, there's chambers or online, um, from homeowners to business owners, uh, to people that own apartments, uh, people involved with the housing authority, um, residents, uh, parents, uh, people from all, all walks of the city. Um, and, uh, they'll serve a three-year term. Um, and as, as they said, it's just an advisory committee, but with all that's happening now with recycling, I, I think it's important that, uh, we have, uh, these people, uh, really dedicated people that are willing to step up and to serve on this committee, and, uh, we unanimously pass that in committee for, for this to be brought forward to, for the full council.
So recommend that be confirmed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
C is, uh, Edward Candy Monument Plaque be redone, reinvested. Um, recommend being complied with. Counselor Tommen?
Yes, we had, uh, a good discussion on this. Of course, there is a stone up there in Kennedy Park, uh, for, uh, Mr. Kennedy, um, and we're trying to get a plaque, a stand-up monument, which we have in several, like, down at, uh, the Veterans, uh, Park here. Um, and we had three of the commissioners here, Mr. Purcell, Mr. Andryzek, and, and Lady Run. Um, she was the chairman, uh, if I haven't got her name right, but, um, they're all on board about this. Uh, we're looking at possibly getting some funds, uh, either ARPA, CPA fund, or grants. Um, we're gonna send this to the mayor to see if there's some funding we can get for this, and, and they're all set to try to get some people, to try to get a design for this, uh, this monument, for this veteran that, uh, really served, this Hoyoker that served, uh, in a, in a very big operation with the Eighty-Second Airborne. And just to note, um, back in my service days, I was down at Fort Bragg. I was, wasn't in the Eighty-Second Airborne because I was afraid to jump out of planes, but here's heroic people for our city that, uh, that did do that and, and gave their lives. So, um, I think this is a great, um, monument for this, Mr. Kennedy, and hopefully we can get, uh, moving on this, and hopefully there'll be some funding for this at that, that beautiful park up there in the Highlands.
Anyone further? Some motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Here we go.
Can you make it as quick as me? You won't be out here by ten, right?
Hmm, I'll try, Peter.
Okay.
Forty-two A, command DGNR to refer the council, uh, approve resolution for a certified project application, uh, special tax assessment. Agreement for Valley Mall LLC for the purpose of the company of Four North Bridge Street. Uh, recommend it be adopted. Contingent amount receipt of annual reports. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, we had a great meeting, uh, DGR a couple weeks ago? I don't know. It seems like a year ago. Um, but we had Andrea, or Andrea, and, uh, Christian Stanley are the owners of, um, Valley Mall, was founded in twenty-nineteen, and, uh, they moved to Hoyoke, um, in late twenty-twenty. Um, they outgrew their location in Hadley. Um, and so they provide the, they initially start, wanted to start as a brewing company, but they actually realized there was a big need to provide the hops that go into brewing, beer, so, among other things. Um, but they are located at Four North Bridge Street, um, right before the, the bridge to South Hadley. Um, and so this project, um, is, they, they came to the council for a special tax assessment. Um, so the, the tax assessment is actually, um, it applies to, uh, the part of the property that Valley Mall will occupy, which is fifty-one percent of the property. Um, the, they have a tenant, and that is West Mass Elder Care. Um, this will not apply to that portion of the building. Um, they had a plan to purchase this, and it's, um, they've been in a lease to own, and business is steadily growing, so, um, those plans have been accelerated, and that's why they're coming, um, to us for a special tax assessment. Um, so this represents a two-point-seven million-dollar investment, um, in Hoyoke. Uh, they plan to double the amount of jobs from eight to sixteen by twenty-twenty-eight. Um, this is obviously retaining, uh, a business in Hoyoke. Um, it's also a great investment in, um, local agriculture, so the agreement itself, um, would go, uh, it would, in year one, it would be a fifty-percent exemption. In year two, it goes down to a forty-percent. Year three, it goes down to thirty-percent. Year four is twenty-percent, and year five is ten percent. So, um, and, uh, I think that's it. They've already invested a significant amount, um, into the space, and, um, this will allow them to get some machinery and equipment, um, that they desperately need in order to meet their growing demand. So we appreciate their investment in the city of Hoyoke, um, and the committee, uh, recommended that we vote to approve this, um, tax agreement. And just for folks that are tuning in and don't know what happens next, is once locally we approve this, um, they do have to submit information to, um, the state as well. So, um, this is the first step in that process. Um, and it's only gonna take effect once they actually purchase the property. Um, and again, it's only to the owner occupied portion of the property. And if I left anything out, I'll welcome. I don't know if your mic was on.
You hear it?
Ah.
Yeah.
That'll do it.
There you go.
Uh, clerk call roll if you're voting for the tax assessment. Forty-two A.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos is yes.
I heard you from the back room.
Everybody heard him. Ah, easy now. Tranquilo, non me molestes.
Wait your vote, you approve that one. Forty-two B, uh, DGNR, city council approve the amendment to the special tax assessment for, uh, Jackson Canal, Jackson Canal LLC, fifty-five Jackson Street, eighty-four Sergeant Street. Um, recommend be adopted. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one is interesting and complex, and I hope that I will do a good job explaining everything. Um, so there's a lot, there's a packet of information, but to summarize, um, the, this is related to the former Parsons Paper property, uh, which is a property within the urban renewal plan. Um, back in, uh, let's see, in twenty-sixteen, um, the redevelopment authority, um, developed a project that would, uh, redevelop the property. Um, there was a four-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall, um, to meet the cost, and so the owner of Aegis Energy, Lee Bardakis, um, at fifty-five Jackson Street, he had already been engaged with planning and economic development to acquire and develop Parsons. Initially, it was gonna be at no cost in exchange for developing the site after it was remediated. It's a significant brownfield. Um, so, let's see, um, in exchange for buying, so Mr. Bardakis was going to buy the property for four-hundred-thousand, um, and in exchange for that and his investment in expanding and creating jobs, Aegis, um, was approved for a special tax assessment. So that STA, the initial STA, estimated, um, that it was a hundred-percent STA for ten years, um, for fifty-five Jackson Street and eighty-four Sergeant Street. Um, and hopefully that would equate to like, in the, in the middle of these two, everyone would break even, or it would all come out together. However, some things have changed at the property. Um, and so Aegis did finance the, the purchase price, um, working with the redevelopment authority and with HEDIC. Um, he has repaid the loan plus interest to date as scheduled. Um, the project was, the investment was met, the job creation requirements were eventually attained. Um, so the incentive started back in twenty, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So we're in the second year of that. Um, but because of this, there's been a few changes. So in twenty-eighteen, Aegis was sold, um, and Mr. Bardakis remains in management, but he no longer owns the actual business. Um, there were business, the operations were consolidated to fifty-nine Jackson Street, um, and so now fifty-five Jackson Street does not have a tenant. Um, and then, as we all know, in twenty-twenty-two, it was brought to our attention that, um, fifty-five Jackson and eighty-four Sergeant are listed with a broker for sale. So, um, in twenty-twenty-three, uh, the Planning and Economic Development Office was notified that he is no longer, Mr. Bardakis is no longer affiliated with, um, the company that bought Aegis, but he still owns the real estate. So because of all that, the city, um, uh, proposed this amendment to the special tax agreement, which would reduce the term from ten years to five years. The incentive is only applicable to the properties that are occupied by an operating business. The properties have received a hundred-percent exemptions in years one and two. So this amendment would provide for three more years of a hundred-percent tax exemption, starting in the current fiscal year. Now I will say, in full transparency, if you didn't watch the meeting, got a little contentious. Understandably, you know, we appreciate the investment that Mr. Bardakis has made. We also understand where the Office of Planning and Economic Development and the mayor's office is coming from. Um, I will say that I was contacted today by, um, the OPED office. Um, and at the time, the committee approved this, um, and we voted in favor, and the recommendation was to come before the full council to vote in favor. We did have the opportunity to hear from Mr. Bardakis, who was not thrilled with us, um, to, to make this decision. Um, and, you know, he was, he was pretty straightforward on how he felt about the agreement, and I don't know, even if we do vote in favor of it tonight, it's one step in the process, and we can't guarantee that he's gonna sign the agreement. So, and he was really clear about that, too. Um, but I will say that, uh, Planning and Economic Development and the Law Department did contact me that they're trying to negotiate an amendment to the agreement. Um, I've seen the amendment in paragraph form via email. Um, it, it sounds like it's not a major change, but, um, I, I just, I don't know. I think Mr. Bardakis would like the, um, agreement to be longer than, than five years. Um, and I just, I don't know, um, or the exemption, I'm sorry. The exemption would be longer than five years. That's what he wants, but those two parties have not, I, I don't, it's, it puts us in a tough situation because we need to vote on something, but, um, I don't know. So, I just.
No, hold on, Councilor Bacon first.
So, just a question. So did legal recommend that we table it till they could come to us with some sort of amendment? Or are they asking us to move it?
I got a lot of, I got a lot of, what does the council feel comfortable with, to be honest?
Well, we were pretty much relying on them, actually, but that's an editorial.
Councilor Bartley's next.
Yeah, the, the motion should be to receive and adopt a committee report and to support the OPED recommendation, which I'm going to make right now. If I get a second on that, I'll explain.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so just, and, and Tessa did a good job. It's a very complicated issue, as you may have picked up in the committee report. The, this was initiated by a letter to Mr. Vardakis in February. He walks in here the other day as if this is the first time he's hearing this. The gentleman hasn't paid taxes since he walked in the door in 2016. Now, good for you. Sold his business presumably at a very handsome profit. But he retains the buildings and he wants, he wants, he wants the gravy train to continue with the non-payment of taxes. As I said to Mr. Vardakis at the meeting, this sounds like a you problem, not a me problem. You had this before you for months and you walk in here pretending, you know, I never had a chance, nobody's talking to me, that is a falsehood. And I stood up for our department head and our department employees. And I filed up with them afterwards, I said, did you have, of course they had meetings with Mr. Vardakis. Of course they did, and the mayor contacted them too. So when you come in here and you start making stuff up, after not paying taxes for a long time, you know, I'm not, I'm not, not inclined to support your, your position. So, I mean, speaking with Aaron, as I have, I, I would say, let's approve this. If they want to come back with amendment, it's still, just one more thing, Mr. President. As we noted, it has to go back to Boston for approval. So there is an appeal process there. So let's move it out of here and let them figure it out with a new meeting of Mr. Vardakis and our department head, whom we rely on for these things. And if that doesn't go his way, he can appeal it in Boston.
Anyone further? Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, I, I don't get down to it too, but I do watch the meetings on Zoom or on TV. And I saw that meeting and like, he was sitting out here and he said, what are you here for? And it was him came in and I, you discussed that for, I don't know, it was about an hour, I think. And I, I, I really would, Councilor Bartley stated everything exactly the way I saw it. And it sounded like he wanted to continue to get this break. And something about the company, he still owns the property, but the company left and this and that. So I, I mean, I, I agree, I think we should move this along and there's opportunity from the appeal. And we should just move this forward and have the, have the OPED still have the discussion when they move this on.
Just one more.
Councilor Bartley?
Just to the chair, to Councilor Tomlin, he got the benefit of his bargain. He got the $400,000 tax break. He got it all. So he won, but he wants it to keep going. At, at what point is too much not enough? Well, in his case, never. So I, I just hope, I just think we just move this along, thank you.
Councilor McGivern?
I will be voting in favor of this, but just, just a little bit different perspective, I think. As far as Mr. Vardakis goes, he did live, live up to his end of the bargain. The job creation was there. The, the uniqueness about this, two unique things about this particular STA is it's the only 100% STA that, the 100% went beyond one year, which is very allowable, but very unusual, especially, I think, in this city anyways. Part of that was because, just remember, Parsons Paper was the oldest paper mill in the city of Hoyoke, vacant when it burnt down. It was a $3.7 million cleanup project, which, which took place with knowing the property could be sold, knowing that Aegis at the time was going to renovate the one building that was still repairable and, and usable. And knowing that, you know, the fields that were left are now for, at least for this moment in time, a solar energy field. It, it solved or resolved, not just an incredible eyesore, but a piece of property that the city did not have an answer to as to how, how to clean it up to be able to sell it. It's a good property, it's not only on a good artery, but it's on the canal itself. And, and for that reason, the original project I voted for, although I never was fully comfortable with the 100% for 10 years. On the, to OPED's credit, what they're stating is the change in value, the change in, partly because of the sale, the change in value and the change in the, the assessments and so forth, the money plus that was the city needed to, to finish the cleanup project and to finish the development project of the former Parsons Paper has been paid back to, to the LLC, which is owned by Mr. Vardakis now. And they're also, and I'm glad to hear from the chair, that they also are willing to continue to negotiate and to talk further about trying to make sense out of this. Where, and one of the things I think Mr. Vardakis did hear us say was, is, you know, even though the, to the, to the letter of the, the original agreement, you know, his argument is, is one that is understandable, but property tax pays for services that his tenants, now tenants, and his company at one time received from the city, whether it be public safety, DPW, so forth and so on. So I, I think, and I agree with what's been said, you know, it's, our position right now is to keep this going forward. Hopefully the negotiations will get it to, to make sense for everybody. And we can all move forward with some wonderful potential on this property in the future.
All right, so the motion is to approve what is before us for this amendment. The clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for it.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Alden Outt of Les?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Givern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Wait your vote, you approve that one, 42C.
Can we take 42C and D as a package?
Motion to suspend rules, take up 42C and D as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. DGNR was referred in order that the city council hereby decertify the certified project for the TIF agreement with ACO Realty, recommend be adopted. D is DGNR, the city council hereby decertify the TIF for Canal Row LLC, recommend be adopted, Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So these two orders are to decertify a TIF agreement, both for very similar reasons, just the, the projects themselves for one reason or another are no longer happening the way that they initially intended. Both were supposed to be, both have been approved, I'm sorry, both have been approved as, through the HDIP program, Housing Development Incentive Program, years ago. And one is for what was known as the Canal Galleries, which is now a couple of cannabis dispensaries. And the other is on Ray Street to build structures. So those projects are not happening any longer, or they've changed. So the state is asking us to just decertify so that they're not, uh, thank you legally there.
All right, anyone further? So motion is for 42C and D to decertify. The clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for both.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
He's out of the room.
Oh, he's out. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Jordane? I'm sorry, Givner?
Yes.
Alden Outt of Les?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Givern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
12 yeas, unanimous vote.
Tomlin's a yes.
Councilor Tomlin's back again. What's your vote, you approve that one, 42E?
All right.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
DGNR, I didn't know if there was. All right, I was waiting, all right. DGNR was referred in order that the council extend the order approved by the council on August 2nd, 2016, and re-approved on October 16, 2018, which authorized a transfer of properties to the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority, 160 Middle Water Street, recommend be adopted, Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is essentially an extension on properties that were transferred to the redevelopment authority, city-owned properties, back in 2018. And so this is part of the redevelopment authority's urban renewal plan. And the discussion was good. We talked about, you know, the, the purpose of transferring these properties through the redevelopment authority. There's a lot more flexibility that the redevelopment authority has. That's why it was created when it comes to a lot of things. But procurement and just, you know, different, different approaches and, and project opportunities that the city just doesn't have the flexibility to do in the way that the redevelopment authority does. We're not a developer, so that's kind of why we have this process. And I believe, yeah, that, those are all the notes I had on that, if anyone has anything else to add.
Councilor Puelo?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I'm not going to be voting for this one or the next one, I think they kind of go hand in hand. And just to be quick, because it's late, but I, I don't really agree with the reason why we're doing this. So we're being told by OPED that it's the same city people that run the HRA that they're in a better position to market this than the normal city RFP process. And I just don't think that's true, I think it's the same people. So what are they going to say differently that they can't say through OPED? I mean, it's the same, you know what I mean? Like if I Google them, it's the same people, like I get the HRA has a board and, you know, whatever else. But it's the same people. To me, it seems like it's more about circumventing the city council and the process of the RFP, which I already think has its own problems. And, you know, I, without throwing knives at people, I already think that there's a lot of issues that aren't okay with a lot of these processes. I think that there's a lot of people in the past that have been treated unfairly by the city and OPED, even through the normal RFP process, so with the HRA process, I mean, forget it. And there's people that have been treated very fairly. They've been hooked up with mass development money, they've been taken care of. And now the latest thing is some people's reverts can, what we're being told by legal is they can be extended by the mayor without city council approval. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at here. And I just think it's, you know, to me, it's just not transparent. And I just don't agree with that process, thank you.
Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Oh, I, Councilor Bartley.
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I agree with what Will says generally, but in this case, I, I just, something's got to be done with this building. It's just sitting in the middle of High Street as a eyesore, sore thumb, however you want to phrase it. And, and nothing's happening with the building for now going on many years, double digits. So I'm hopeful that, that the HRA can get a pathway forward with this, one way or the other, and more efficiently either demo it and just somehow get it back into the private sector hands or find some better use for it, because the current status of it is untenable. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Oh, you know what, I'm good, I said everything I need to say that night.
Councilor McGivern?
Just, I'll be voting in favor of it because we've, I think the HRA is, is, has a unique opportunity. Maybe not so much a better marketing position, but a unique opportunity to work on an urban renewal plan, which was approved by this full city council and certainly overseen by the mayor and the HRA committee itself. OPED is just, you know, provides the administrative assistance to, to allow them to do what they do. They cannot act on any property or anything that's not within the plan itself. And the, the difference is between the city doing it straight out, it's, it's piece by piece. HRA is able to do, and it's one of the largest plans within the Commonwealth itself for an HRA. And certainly is cumbersome and certainly has a lot of projection and a lot of vision and goals within it. So I, I, I think they've been doing an incredibly hard job of working on it and they just need some of the pieces to fall in place. And they do bring in other, other people in to do some of the development, but not one piece at a time, more large parcels at a time as part of the overall big plan.
No one further, this motion is to adopt. The clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for 42E.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Alden Outt of Les?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
No.
12 yeas, one aye.
Wait your vote, you approve that one, 42F. Command DGNR, in accordance with the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority Urban Renewal Plan is amended, a vote to approve the transfer of properties listed to the HRA for consideration, recommend be adopted. Councilor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of similar, but these are actually properties that are listed in the urban renewal plan, but they have recently been brought before us specifically because there's a lot of activity happening with the transformative development initiative. And so I think it's just a couple of properties that are on this specific list. But again, it just allows the redevelopment authority to be able to approach different developers who have creative solutions. And it's not as delayed, it's, it's, there's actually people who go to school for planning and economic development. And as someone who worked in planning and economic development, this, there's like studies on why redevelopment authorities exist. So this is going to support that. And I encourage folks to, you know, learn more about planning and economic development. Thank you.
Anyone further? Councilor Bartley?
Just want to point out one of the, this is a series of properties scattered throughout the urban renewal area and scattered throughout the downtown area. One of the most prominent, of course, is the Armory and the facade. And that is, Mr. President, that's almost a half acre of land. And in an area that had a lot of momentum for a number of years, is really kind of coming along. It seems to have been sort of stymied in the last few years. But I'm hopeful that maybe with HRA coming on board, maybe they can do something at the, you know, Walnut and, and in that area where the, where the Armory exists. It's, it's an important area of the city and I, I think there's a lot of potential. And there's already been some prior really positive investment with the bank and the senior center and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, that, that all of us have been, been a part of, frankly. So, so the other ones, I mean, it seems like it's a little bit, you know, maybe overly hopeful by OPED, but I guess that's, that's part of their business. I mean, they're, they're talking about creating full-time grocery stores and all that. And, and wouldn't that be wonderful? But to find the, to find a, a private investor with that kind of firepower to put in a gross, full-time grocery store in the flats is not going to be an easy, easy fix. So maybe, maybe there's another option, but at least that's their planning. And hopefully HRA can, can get us across the finish line, thanks.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, hopefully this can happen, that was a good meeting. And I saw some of this and talking about these properties and try to, with the HRA, to do something with them. And speaking of the old Armory, remember in '72 and '73, I watched Mr., my colleague here, Mr. McGivern, play for Hoyoke Catholic, Joe, at, at the Armory, right? I mean, you had one of the best teams going, didn't you?
Yes, Councilor Tomlin.
Yeah. And I'd love to see something developed there. But they had some really good games at the Armory back, back in the day. And some good fights too, right, David?
Good fights, my dad coached there for, he was the head coach of Hoyoke Catholic for, for five years, so.
There you go.
Coached a lot of games there.
See, no one further, so motion is to adopt. Clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for 42F.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
I mean, Anderson, yeah. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Givner.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
Maldonado Vales.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Rafi Rambeleti.
Yes.
Puelo.
No.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Your vote, you approve that. No charter rules, no joint committee. Onto motions, orders, resolutions. Forty-five from Councilor Givern. Uh, order that the, uh, Board of Health provide the Public Safety Committee with either a presentation or written outline of what laws exist to protect property owners from de- and or growing trees to public safety. Copy to Board of Health. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Forty-six from Councilor Givern, uh, order that the streetlights be added to Taylor Street for the safety of residents and their properties. Uh, there's no light on fifty-nine to sixty-one. So to.
HNE.
Copy to the mayor. I do believe the mayor signed off on this as well.
Uh, DPW.
DPW.
DPW. So HNE, DPW, and the mayor. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
For, uh, forty-six and forty-seven, if you could, I've asked the, the counselor if I could add my name to those two items.
Forty-six, adding Councilor Tomlin. Forty-seven, Councilor Givern. Order temporary speed humps be placed at Taylor Street. Um, to be followed by permanent speed humps. Um, so this would be receive, refer to DPW. And what was that? And copy to public safety, adding Councilor Tomlin. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Forty-eight, uh, order that the dead tree at sixty-one Taylor Street be removed. Motion be receive, adopt, and send to the forestry. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Forty-nine, uh, order that the curving school street sidewalks be assessed and repaired or replaced. So that would be receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty, from Councilor Givern. Order that be discussed to create and encourage, uh, community stores and fast food stores, orders to install trash receptacles and trash can collections throughout the city. Um, would you like this to public safety? To public safety, number fifty. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Yeah, just, I, I've never seen this before. I've been here a few years, but I, I like the, the heading on all these orders with community support. You know, it really is, uh, admirable to see that counselor put that in there. So she actually.
Good job, Coco.
Went to Peville. I know you just didn't put this out there. You reached out to the residents and I, I think that's important.
Fifty-one, from Councilor Jordane, Councilor Puelo. Uh, city council review the laws of enforcement, rights, reverter, and extension reverters.
I think I'd say, I'd like it to go to ordinance cause I'd like to propose a potential ordinance.
All right, so to ordinance, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-two, from Councilor Jordane, Councilor Puelo. Order the Law Department provide the city council an inventory of outstanding rights or inverters. So same thing to.
Ordinance.
Ordinance with a copy to law.
Yes, copy to the Law Department, please.
Copy to law. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Fifty-three, from Councilor Jordane. Police chief provide an updated list of all tickets issued for calendar year twenty-twenty-three, uh, to the chief. But do you wanna copy back to us or you want it to public safety?
Um, I, I think a copy over to public safety would be nice. And I know we, we would appreciate, you know, getting this sooner rather than later if the chief could put that.
All right, so receive to.
Yep.
The chief and to public safety, adding Councilor Bacon. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-four, uh, no, that was fifty, yeah, fifty-four.
I, I would.
That's done. So fifty-four, council explorer with the mayor, uh, redevelopment plan for a city-owned vacant parcels. How, homes have been built and sold. So what do you wanna do with this one?
I'd like to go to DG and R with this.
This is to DG and R. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Five. Law Department and the mayor be invited to the city council discuss and update the city, uh, resevership program.
We could do DG and R would be good with that too.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty-six.
Uh, receive, adopt, and refer to the, uh, Parks Department. Who, ooh.
So Park Department, please install, uh, sensor systems and improve the camera systems at Pulley at Pool. So receive, adopt. And you want it to.
Who?
Parks.
To the mayor.
Parks, with a copy to the mayor. Yeah.
Parks.
If it's a funding issue. I know Tom's already given me some initial insights on it, but we wanna see what we can do. If, if anything more, they've got cameras, but I think they need more of a motion system. And how are the cameras being monitored? There's a little, there's some more nuance to it.
Do you just wanna report back? Receive, adopt, send to Parks, copy to mayor.
Maybe a copy to public safety too might be a good idea as well. Yeah.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty. Fifty-seven.
Receive a do, uh, okay, go ahead.
So Councilor Jordane, please, uh, mayor, please consider putting the senior discount back into the Comcast. So that'd be receive.
Adopt, refer to the mayor.
Send to the mayor. All those in, oh, Councilor.
I just wanna note that the Comcast license hearing is at six o'clock on September fourteenth.
Yep.
September fourteenth, six o'clock.
Give the location again, Linda, too.
One Court Plaza.
One Court Plaza. All right. So motion received, send to the mayor. All those in favor.
Mr.?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Tomlin, sorry.
On that, if Councilor Jordane don't matter of mind, could I have my name onto that?
I'd be honored, and maybe you can be the first one as a.
I'm a senior citizen now.
Recent senior, yes.
I'm, I'm into my second year.
All right, and adding one too. I'd like to add one.
I appreciate that.
He can get the first discount. We'll give it to one. You can have the second.
Adding Councilor Tomlin and Councilor Anderson Burgos. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty-eight, from Councilor Jordane. Order that the ordinance committee invite in the mayor and the DPW superintendent review chapter seventy-four. So receive to ordinance. Copy to the mayor, DPW superintendent. All those in favor.
Can I just, real quick, under discussion though?
All right, go ahead.
Okay. And again, the only reason I'm gonna make a couple comments that I just wanna raise awareness for, especially for newer people in government. I am the recipient today, and perhaps you are as well. In the mail, this, that came out to everybody and we're giving out. And I'm sure, you know, they're very go-get-'em. And, you know, this is a great initiative. And I know, I believe this was all paid for with ARPA. And this is all great. There's, the only problem is, is we set the ordinances of the city of Hoyok in this article, this section seventy-four, that I'm pointing out to one and all in the room and the mayor and the DPW superintendent. This is regulated by law. Law set right here in this room. We have ordinances. I'm gonna point to seventy-four dash two, which establishes you have to have a thirty-five gallon trash barrel. It also regulates, you're allowed to put out twelve a week. We have all these rules on weekly collection. There's a law that this council passed in two thousand and eleven. And we've discussed this. So we can have a discussion. Maybe we should do new things. Maybe we should have a new program. Maybe we should do who knows what, right? But there's a process. And how can you go out and say to everybody, you, here's your new barrel? You're only allowed one, and you have to do it this way. And it's all starting on September eighteenth, when we have an ordinance that we've all took an oath to uphold that says just the opposite, okay? So I, I know, maybe in the end we get to this. I don't know. Maybe, whatever. But the point is, we gotta have this discussion first because we have rules that don't allow this to occur yet. Maybe we will pass it. Who knows?
It's like, it's like the traffic squad.
There you go. Um, and the point, the point that I'm also, uh, mentioning is, I don't know about you guys, but I'm already getting concerns from some constituents, particularly senior citizens that said, I can't lift this kind of a barrel. I have no, I have no place to put it. Um, I don't have a garage. I don't have a driveway. In fact, I have some residents who live in Philadelphia cottages. They, you know, like, how can I get this up and down the stairs? Am I gonna leave it for the whole week out on the sidewalk? Or, like, how is this even gonna work? My point is, people are asking legitimate questions. They're also like, can I get a second? What if I have too much? You know, are we thinking about all the facets? So my point is, I'm keeping a total open mind on this. This could be the greatest thing in the world. I have no idea. The point is, citizens have legitimate concerns, and we have a legal process. And that's through ordinance. That's this. And so this needs to happen before this. So I'm hoping this'll go to the ordinance committee, and we can review and have everybody come in and have a nice conversation and have citizen input. But we have a process on all these things. So I don't know how we got to this stage without that conversation. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilor McGivern.
Um, I think Councilor Jordane said it all. I would like to co-sign this if, uh, with his permission. Um, the, the DPW, I, I know they're well-intended. I understand there was a brief discussion about this during the budget hearing that it was coming, not the details that we've been hearing about in recent weeks. But I think the importance of what Councilor Jordane said and what we have to find out is, none of this is enforceable if the ordinance isn't tweaked. And I, I know I've talked to the president, and I've already made some phone calls to the Law Department, and everybody's working on it. But we, we need to have a discussion before anybody tries to enforce this. You know, maybe you can implement part of it and, and some people can use it. But certainly, an option to purchase a second one should be out there. And certainly, you know, properties, not all properties are, are adaptable to this type of, uh, of a bucket, even though it's on wheels. It, it just isn't gonna work everywhere. And I, I think it's important that we do it and we do it quick. I, I will say, it, it's, uh, you know, it's an editorial comment, but I, I question how ARPA money's in the beginning could be sent without city council input. And that's how we got here. And there are hundreds of thousands of dollars of consultants that are doing work in the city that the city council never had a chance to say yea or nay to. And, uh, we're, we're catching up to it. But the ordinance is ours, and it needs to be looked at immediately.
All right, so adding Councilor McGivern, Councilor McGee. This is going to ordinance. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty-nine is.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules, take up items fifty-nine, eighty, and eighty-one, and send them to ordinance.
Fifty, what was that? I missed that.
Fifty-nine, eighty, and eighty-one.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up fifty-nine, eighty, and eighty-one. All those.
Ninety.
Nine.
Thank you, Bartley.
And ninety?
Yep.
All right.
All the same.
Hang on, hang on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eighty.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifty-nine, um, handicap parking spot being installed at the new park by Kennedy Field. Uh, handicap sign is number eighty at five eighty-four South Summer. Eighty-one is sixty North East Street handicap sign. Ninety is handicap sign at five four one, or fifty-four and a half Davis Street. All to ordinance. All those in favor.
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could you add me onto that, uh, first one? The fifty-nine? Is that Kennedy? Yeah. For the park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Adding Councilor Tomlin to fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Can we suspend the rules for sixteen, sixty-one as a package?
Hold on. Sixty, sixty-one. Take up as a package.[1430.98] Sixty, sixty-one, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both sixty. The polling places for each voting precinct for the city of Hoyoke for the preliminary election to be held Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, would be Ian White School, uh, one Jefferson Street, sixty-one. Um, also at the polling places are seven AM to eight PM for Ward Seven. Uh, motion be receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, um, I guess, can we suspend the rules on, just for clarity, um, just because we got gotten messages on both sides, could the city clerk let us know if, um, early voting and mail-in voting will be happening for the preliminary or if that's just a general election?
Motion is to suspend the rules, ask the clerk a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, early voting, excuse me, is not happening for the preliminary election just because it's the one ward. Um, however, residents can early vote through the mail. There just won't be any in-person early voting. Um, and as far as November goes, we are meeting as a board of registrar in, um, September thirteenth, I believe the date is. We did have one scheduled, but, um, unfortunately we had to postpone and we will be taking a vote of the board to see if we're going to have early voting in person or not.
So for clarity, the, um, mail-in voting, the residents will have to request it for the preliminary or would it be automatically sent to them?
No, it, um, only state elections, the applications are automatically sent for local elections. Um, they have to request it. The application is available on the website as well.
Thank you, Brenna.
You're welcome, no problem.
Anyone further? So sixteen, sixty-one, all those receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixty-two, from Counselor McGee, Counselor Mercer Rambeletti, adding Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you.
Order that Veteran Services Director be invited in, uh, for the development of a regional Veteran Services district. Motion would be receive and send to.
Public Service?
Public Service.
Public Service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, bless you.
Bless you.
So order that the Blessed Sacrament student who won the third place for statewide, uh, poster contest, motion be receive, adopt and invite them, or invite person in, uh, for next meeting? Was it next meeting or?
Never, maybe.
So be next meeting. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixty-four.
You can make a motion to suspend the rules to take up, uh, several items as a package being, and refer to finance, being sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four and then seventy-six. All going to finance.
Motion to suspend, adopt, take those up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixty-four is one thousand two hundred to fuel weights and measures. Sixty-five is two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars, um, for fiscal year, twenty services rendered in the prior year. Sixty-six is six thousand from E nine one one dispatchers to stipend. Seventy is twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars from energy, gas, oil to, uh, the library. Seventy-one is a grant, car seat grant. Seventy-two is capital stabilization, a hundred thousand dollars to the sewer. Seventy-three is capital stabilization, fifty thousand dollars to the sewer legal services. Seventy-four is patrolmen, Quinn bill, a hundred thousand dollars for overtime. Seventy-six is another grant, um, for municipal preparedness program. All those to finance.
And just, real, real quick, our next finance scheduled meeting is September thirteenth. Um, it currently is projected to include a number of orders that are connected to the issues in the Treasury's Department that we've been talking about both in finance and then the full city council. And we'll do our best to get as many of these items on the, on that agenda. And then after that, please keep us in your prayers and thoughts for when our next meeting can be and we can get the rest of the items on the agenda sometime.
All right, so all those to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seventy-nine from Counselor Mercer Rambeletti and adding Counselor Tomlin. With the support of the city Veterans Benefits Department, the city council adopt an ordinance to provide free municipal parking for veterans, uh, with their license. So.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-two from Counselor, uh, Israel Rivera, that, uh, inviting Thomas Irwin from Paint Care at Mass to discuss pending state legislation. So DGNR? For this one?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eighty-three from Counselor Jenny Rivera, order that a stop sign be considered for, on Suffolk at the intersection, um, ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-four from Counselor Jenny Rivera, order that they request the repainting of all crosswalks.
Mr. President, that needs to get copied over to DPW and the engineer. Eighty-three, please.
So two ordinance for the copy over to city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Eighty-four was the painting of, uh, crosswalks. Motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I, can I ask to add on completion of the lines in Ward Five, too? They're, they got halfway done and stopped.
So do you want to amend this to add Ward Five? So at the end of it, add on and the completion of.
The crosswalks.
Ward Five, crosswalks.
And road markings in Ward Five.
And Ward Six. They're, really, it's all over.
And Ward Seven. Well, I do, just.
The whole down.
I do believe they said they had to get a new machine.
They did, yeah.
They're doing catch-up. So.
I saw them out in Ward Three there, boy, Counselor Barley must be moving. I saw him out there.
He's got the clout.
Westfield Road and Northham Street?
I'm not going to lie.
You got the clout, I'm telling you.
I'm not going to lie. Well, they made it up to the fire station.
Must have ran out of paint, I don't know.
They ran out.
And they promised in the budget hearings they would not run out of paint. They did promise it.
All right, so on the amendment to add Ward Five as Counselor Bacon has asked and other locations, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And to receive, adopt, send to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eighty-five from Counselor Jenny Rivera, order that, uh, the curb cut, uh, for wheelchair access and walkers at Appleton Street, uh, three hundred Appleton Street. So this would be receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-seven, Counselor Rivera, Counselor Mala Vales, that the Board of Health, Police, uh, Property Department let us know the process of addressing noise complaints.
Can we send it to public safety with a copy to ordinance?
So public safety, copy to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-eight from Counselor Bacon, uh, no engine brake sign at Westfield Road. Um, so this would be to.
Receive, adopt and.
Receive and adopt.
DPW.
Send to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that the TJO O'Karr be invited into a subcommittee to discuss how they serve, uh, the city, which would be DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public Service as well, copy to Public Service.
The copy to Public Service?
Yeah.
Or public safety or Public Service?
Usually goes to DGNR, doesn't it?
DGNR.
DGNR. Okay, DGNR.
Okay, so DGNR.
Yep.
Ninety-one from Counselor Bartley, that the DPW replaced a sidewalk between West Glenn Street and Clark Street. So this would be receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Some old.
Copy to mayor?
Some old.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ninety-two from Counselor Bartley, city engineer redesign, uh, redesigned the DPW, replace the traffic aisle approximately at two Brown Ave, two seventy-four South Street. So motion be receive, adopt, refer to city engineer.
Yeah, and refer to a finance committee as well because it's going to have to take up financial.
All right, so receive, refer to city engineer.
This is way down the road, Joe.
And we're getting resident input that live there, obviously.
Put her, put her right in there. They're, they're all, they're all in favor.
Okay, good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ninety-three from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Jordane, due to constituents concerned with , uh, disposal of needles, that the DPW look to secure the fence on the west side of Woodland Street. Motion be receive, adopt and send to DPW?